Back before I was having a heart attack at 57, you know.
Oh.
Things started indigestion and stuff started to happen.
What, they just pump loads in you?
Uh huh. And said, we want you to spend the night. I said, dude, I gotta go to Virginia. I ain't spending the night. He said, yeah, you can spend the night. We argued for about five minutes.
Did you spend the night?
No. He gave me my paper hurt and spent the night in Savannah.
He's annoying.
Oh, this was, no, this was in May.
I'm glad you didn't get sick on the cruise.
You know, my principal put it into perspective, you know, if you don't have that happen, that's a great time to have it happen. We're good to go?
We're all right.
All righty. Ladies and gentlemen, let's try that again. Ladies and gentlemen, I call the order to, uh, March 2nd Board of Supervisors meeting for Fluviana County will begin with Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And before I continue on, folks, I hope every one of us in attendance and every one of us that are listening really take to heart with the opportunity we just got because there's people around the world that are fighting for it. And please keep those folks in your prayers. Uh, next up, do we have an, well, Mr. Doll, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Nothing.
Unless we have, folks, we're having, some of the guys are running a little bit behind, so we may have to slide, uh, A, down a little bit. So, do we have an adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My boy's, my boy's a little slow today. I might say, he's on, he's on video feed. He's three second delayed, you know.
That's right.
Uh, Chairman votes aye. Motion passes 5-0. All righty, Mr. Doll.
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, just a few things to report this evening. Um, so one, just kind of be on the lookout. I know we talked about this before. We'll be, at Pleasant Grove Park, we will be doing the controlled burn there coming up within probably the next week or two. So remember the board, looking on the map here, um, I guess it was probably about six to eight months ago, we did a controlled burn in front of the Pleasant Grove House in Field A and back in Field B. We were gonna do Field C at the time, but just due to some weather conditions, we couldn't do that. Uh, Department of Forestry is, is, is prepping again. I think they were out there bulldozing fire lines in the front Field C, um, as of today, and the burn date will be kind of dependent upon, you know, weather and all that. But within probably the next week or two, they're gonna be, um, hopefully getting out there in that front field to do a controlled burn. Um, again, it'll be done by the Virginia Department of Forestry, um, the neighbors of, of the property there, they've been notified. And so, um, if there's any questions, there'll be a sign there to show a controlled burn and all that, V dot signs. So just kind of want to give you a little heads up on that.
And what is it for then? Why are they doing that?
Yeah, so, so we've got the, we've got the, kind of the revitalization of the fields out there and just kind of help with the field and the quail habitat. It's recommended every so many years to do controlled burns on those fields to kind of get rid of the underbrush and all that. So it's, it's a more vibrant, uh, metal plan to, to get the fields back in shape.
It keeps the natural grasses that they want instead of having it turn into a cedar cut over.
Yeah.
And those little trees that are out in the field, they protect them.
Yeah, what they do in, in between where the, where the, where kind of the growth is in the little trees that were planted there, they bulldoze a fire line right in between there. Um, and so, so then fire doesn't, you know, doesn't go beyond.
To protect the planted tree.
Yeah.
But it has some nutrients too that it does.
Well, it restores, the burning will restore nutrients.
Nutrients as well.
If you remember back years ago, we had that huge brush fire over on, uh, Central Plain. And I say brush fires, that field fire and it had been broom straw and stuff for 10 years. And the next thing you know, they had this beautiful, that next spring, boy, it was green.
When you got in the hush.
Exactly.
So, so we're on a path to do this every couple of years?
Every year, one spot every year.
One spot every year. Yep.
Well, we need to do, uh, burning from the excess trees that have fallen over. What are we doing with that?
Uh, we're, we're, well, in Pleasant Grove Park and county property, we're, uh, we're grinding them up and, and chipping them.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand there's a big pile of trees for mulching across the Lummy Bridge. Is that in?
No, it's not. Well, across the Ravana Bridge. Um, one of the companies, I think, has gotten a deal with, uh, Shellback.
And I heard it's huge.
It's, I drive by it every day, ma'am. It's three piles.
Yeah.
Two long ones that are tall and they're adding to it every day. Uh, I know that they've already burned one pile there, Mr. Shellback had, or Shelley has. Um, so I don't know, and those will, the ones at Pleasant Grove are our responsibility. The others are not our responsibility. Um, I know one of the guys at Vanderlin told me that, I forget which county it is, has actually hired them to mulch.
Mm-hmm. We're gonna have lots of mulch.
Mulch will be cheap.
I have no idea how many loads of trees.
Might have been spottalian.
Yeah. Um, so Pleasant Grove Park, Mr. Spitzer and his, and his team, they're getting Pleasant Grove Park again, talking about downed trees. Um, it's been a, been a pretty big undertaking. You get 22 miles of, of trails cleared and out of the way. And luckily, there's only a handful of trails that are, that are not, um, that are still closed due to downed trees. And most of them are kind of across Burke Creek and kind of along the outer, outer edge of the trails. Again, Horseshoe, Burke Heights Loop, Burke Ridge, Heritage Trail, and then Reed's Beach Grove. But Mr. Spitzer hopes to have all that within the next week or two.
So horseshoes should be done this week?
Okay. Yep. So again, he's, he, this, yep, end of the month. He is busily working to get all the trails back open. Um, redistricting. So if you remember back when we went through redistricting, kind of the, the final process is we, we needed to submit something to the Attorney, Office of the Attorney General for a certificate of, of no objection. Um, we got a letter recently from the Attorney General's Office. One, basically, they noted that Fluvana County is adjusting the boundaries. It's five election districts. And they're also noted about changing the central absentee precinct and some comments that they had just, you know, um, one, just kind of paraphrasing, Fluvana has no majority-minority district. Additionally, the proportion of the majority and minority voters remains at approximately the same levels under the, under the proposed redistricting. Population size of all districts are within the 5% of the ideal district. And again, uh, in the letter, it noted that these changes do not appear to have the purpose or effect of denying or abridging the right to vote based upon race or color or membership in a language minority group. Um, so the Attorney General's Office has issued a certificate of no objection. So basically meaning the redistricting and what we did is, is legal and compliant and we're, we're all good to go at this point now. Mr. Payne, anything to add to that?
Well, they, the, uh, I always thought that if they didn't approve ours, they wouldn't approve anybody's. Because ours was so straightforward. I mean, not that it was easy, but it was straightforward with their issues. They, they did send an email to me, uh, asking a question. And that was, it had to do with, uh, the calculation of, of the people from the prison. And I didn't have the, the answer right off the top of my head, so I sent it to Kelly and Donna. And I called Kelly to tell her it was coming. And by the time we got off the phone, Donna had answered it. And it was, the answer was so definitive to the Attorney General's Office, they sent the email back immediately. So thank you for your attention.
2084 and 17, if you're talking about my district, minus versus plus.
Yeah. So anyway, we, like I said, we, 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 we got our official letter back and, and everything's good with that. Um, so back on January 19th, uh, the Village Gardens Public Hearing, a resident came up and spoke and, and relayed some information about Aqua Virginia being non-compliant, um, with their solids and BODs. Um, and so I, right in front of you two, also, just before you go on, and I sent this to you before, there's a letter from Aqua Virginia, and then there's also a chart, which is similar to the one in the Aqua Virginia one that I, that I, that I have provided, that kind of gives the information. Um, so when the resident came up and spoke, I'm, I'm not gonna give you the exact numbers, but they said something to the effect of Aqua Virginia is over 200-some percent non-compliant with, with their permits for solids and BODs. That, those, those, um, comments were incorrect. When, when the resident spoke on that and was comparing, um, the annual amount versus what they are monthly, their annual allowance versus what they actually do on a monthly basis, he was comparing the, the wrong numbers, which, which led to that very large incorrect, um, 260-some percent. So really, the correct amount is really closer to, find it here, on this chart right here. I mean, so, so there was some discussion of in 2016, there are 260%, 260% um, above their allowance, which is actually incorrect. So they're 22% of their allowance. That's just for solids. 2017, again, there are some 200, stated there are some 200%. Again, they're only 18% and so on and so forth. So, so when the resident spoke, they were comparing, um, monthly data with, with annual data, which leads to an incorrect percentage. So back to, um, the board, Mr. Fairchild asked, you know, kind of how did we come to it? So one, we originally got the information from Southern Development. They gave us some information, kind of refuting the facts that the resident spoke about. So from that point, I then took the information, um, I was given, I was given links to the EPA, EPA website, which kind of monitors all the DEQ compliance data. Um, I reached out to Aqua Virginia to get their response, and the letter that you all have in front of you is, is Aqua Virginia's response. And I also reached out to DEQ and DEQ, um, contacted me and I sent an email that was similar, listing the information on the screen and what I'm, what I'm reporting. And again, DEQ confirmed that what the resident spoke of is, is not correct. It's incorrect information. Um, and, and so really, I think the letter from Aqua Virginia probably, um, more appropriately spells it out. What is the correct, uh, what is the correct percentages and the charts as well? Um, so, you know, just as we're, um, again, I wanted to report back to board, ask to get some information on that, you know. And obviously, I, I think if, if DEQ knew that Aqua Virginia was 200-some percent, um, out of compliance, I think they would do something about that. So again, we, we, we confirm, myself personally, went through all the information. We got confirmations from the applicant at the time. After that, we got confirmation from Aqua Virginia. We got confirmation from DEQ that what was reported was, was not correct. With, with the exception of the smell. That, that one, you, you, you can, you can, that was correct. You do smell things periodically.
The letter does make notes that they're making improvements to that and that Mr. Henry was, uh, some of his improvements. Awarded a little bit of water.
Yeah.
So that's, that's impressive by the NWC. So.
Yep.
It sounds like they, they understand that the community is very tired of the smell.
Yeah, and, and, and.
They would do themselves a lot of public relations.
And to go back to that too, when I was, when I spoke with, um, DEQ, um, you know, kind of what they said is one, let's give you an example. Let's just say hypothetically Aqua Virginia didn't have any, any waste going through the plant for two months. Now, that doesn't mean that the other 10 months out of the year, you can overload the system for the same amount that you would have done for, for 12 months. They look at it on a monthly basis and they also monitor every two to three weeks. Um, so when you look at it on a monthly basis, there was only one time in the past four years that, that they had a overexceedance of their percentages, and it was in December of 2018. And after speaking with DEQ, they said specifically that was due to, one, um, there was, there was a, there's a plant issue that occurred at the time. Um, there was heavy snowfall, there was rain, um, in, at times when you get some of the, um, heavy rain and snowfall, sometimes some of the moisture and precipitation can get into the manhole covers in the sewer. So sometimes that can create an additional, um, exceedance in what's there. So at, at that one month, um, that was, that was the issue. And what was reported by DEQ, that, that they confirmed that the same for that. So like I said, just wanted to clear that up since, since those comments were made, uh, to the public and, and to the board and just wanted to clear that up.
Is it, is it fair reading based on the fact that they've only exceeded, um, like 26% in 2018? Or I'm sorry, not exceed, only utilized 26% of the level of, uh, and again, in 2019, only 21% of the utilization, that they're really operating at, say, 70%, I mean, 30% capacity? Do you get any sense from that? I don't want to read into it. I'm not trying to say that. I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, I, I don't know. And like I said, I, I didn't get, I didn't dive too deep. And I was more or less trying to confirm or, or confirm and clarify the data that was reported. So, um, and, and two here, just a really quick thing, that here's one link to the EPA site. And this is what I use to go through and, um, in addition to all the other things. This brings you directly to the EPA site and it shows you for 2021, and you can go back to whatever year you want. But again, this is showing total pounds per year that, um, that, that, that plant has, has utilized versus the maximum allowable. So you can see 13,700 for the year has been utilized out of 7,800. Clearly, that's not over 100% or 200%. And so I did that and looked at every year.
And sewer, of course, is separate from their actual, uh, permit to pour water.
Correct. This has nothing to do with the water. It's just strictly from, from sewer and the wastewater treatment.
And I want to say, I appreciate this because I feel like we need to get information that we can have an opinion on. And, um, and I did go through this and I'm no life scientist, so a lot of it I didn't get. And it's not what I do every day analyzing the information, but there was enough that I could pull out of it to understand where they stood. And to me, I'm just, I'm somebody who needs, and I feel like the board should be, uh, that needs data. Uh, and there's a question about something.
Yeah, no, no problem. Like I said, I just, you know, like I said, we want to make sure that if someone's saying something that they think is factual, that, that if it's not, that it's, that it's corrected.
They don't have a requirement to, to maybe do a yearly report to their residents? I would have some, because you know, like, um, first day, periodically, they have to report to the people who use that system. And they leave copies in the library. Probably people don't understand it because it comes for one. But, um, I can at least read that everything is okay. So I was wondering if Aqua does.
We, we were gonna, I don't, I mean, one, they have to report to the SCC and all these agencies and everything. Actually, uh, we were talking to them about potentially just having Aqua come out and just do a presentation to the board at some point. Just because there's lots, been lots of questions throughout some of these developments. And, you know, just give a chance to Aqua to spill, you know, any mist that there may be and for, give the board a chance to ask them questions.
They spill or just spill?
Just spill. No spilling. Just spill.
I, I don't know, Mozell, the answer to that question, if the people in Lake Monciel get any type of report or not. Because if it, I, I don't see a lot of mail that came in there when I was living there. I don't remember ever seeing it.
I mean, oh, I can, I can speak, I can speak specifically, one, one's living in Lake Monciel. I didn't get a report, but again, they report to, you know, state agencies and federal agencies, so. But again, you gotta know what you're looking for. So, so that's that on that. Um, and then also on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan webpage has been posted on the county website. Um, Thursday, March 10th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Fluvana Library, there'll be kind of a comprehensive plan review, open house to kind of look at maps, you know, kind of go through some things. Mr. Miles and staff will be there. And if there's any questions prior, they can contact Mr. Miles.
Uh, 2040?
Yes, it's the 2040 Comp Plan.
Twenty-year plan.
Yeah.
Oh, it's a, oh, there's a five and a 20-year plan. Okay.
It's five, five is the required, I think, period.
Yeah.
But the plan is for 20.
It's a 20-year plan, but, but revisions are made throughout, yeah, or sooner. Yep. Um, and then coming up, just some upcoming meetings we have. So March 9th, next week, you have a, a board budget work session at 7:00 PM. And then March 16th, um, we have a budget work session, um, at 5:00 PM and then a 7:00 PM regular meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, the board, board may have.
Um, how are we, um, advertising the March 10th meeting? Four to six, too, is a lot of people not home from work if they really want to be involved.
Um, well, I mean.
That's okay.
Yeah, I mean, so as far as advertising, we've gone through some of our normal channels and, and I have to get with Mr. Miles. And I know we, we put it out through fan mail, through the county website, um, through probably social media.
Fires.
And again, this is just the very first one. There's gonna be lots of meetings on a monthly basis. And just remember, uh, at the next Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission, um, members will be, um, appointing individuals for kind of the advisory groups for the different, um, you know, like land use and things like that. And then, then kind of some of the work, work, work will really kind of start ramping up at that point.
So just for, since you're saying there are, as we know, there's gonna be more meetings, why do it at four?
Mr. Miles, come on up real quick, please.
So to answer your question, Jeff, for, for advertising, we are utilizing all of our regular meetings. We've actually been advertising, um, some of these events. There's four of them that will be coming up. The reason we're doing it at four is there's, uh, there's opportunities for people who work shift, seven to three. So they're coming home 3:30, 4 o'clock. And then school, different things are, when schools are letting out. Um, we also want to respect the time that the library is allowing us to use the room. So from four to six, in the two-hour window, we're capturing, um, two different cycles for people who are coming through, that would be coming to the event. The first one is mainly gonna be some opportunities for, as Mr. Doll said, to look at, um, maps and kind of do some brainstorming and basically analysis of what the current comp plan is and that we've already talked to on February 8th, to the, to the commission. So as, as Mr. Doll said, they're going to appoint the resident advisory groups next Tuesday. And then we'll start off with, with that information. We've got several groups of people that are interested in coming. FLDP people, of course, they're gonna bring some of their participants. Um, we've worked out, um, some groups that are interested in attending that are retirees and they want to come right away. So some of the folks that, um, have the cycle from like five to six when they're leaving work. And the other main thing that we're gonna do, it's not just one, one day a month. We're gonna leave the plan, the plan maps in the library, just like we did the redistricting maps. So they'll actually be there throughout the entire time for folks to look at.
But the one thing we can do though, i- if we find that we're not getting a good attendance from this, we are certainly willing to have more meetings and open houses and we can change times. But this was just kind of the initial, um, the initial thing that we wanted to get out there. And again, like I said, we're, we're flexible. We're not, you know, we're not tied to, we've got keys to get into the library. We need to say a little later. What's that?
Will it be on Zoom?
Uh, and for this one, no, this is not on Zoom.
No, we're, we're not looking at trying, what we're trying to do is engage people, um, in the room. We're actually going to, um, have opportunities for people to come in in cycles. So if there's a lot of people that want to come in, we're just gonna have, you know, a smaller amount come in. Others can be, um, selecting books in the library and then come back in about every 15 minutes.
Is that really a presentation?
Yeah.
It's more just kind of coming in, seeing information, asking questions?
Oh, yeah. GIS workstation, um, when you first come in, there'll be maps of the county. Then there'll be the individual housing, transportation, um, future land use all the, around the room. And then you'll end at a workstation. The August, or excuse me, the April meeting will start a survey, um, so that people will be gathering, um, information through a survey that's online and in person for people to complete. So, um, and then throughout the summer, actually, we're gonna try to go around the county and go to like, um, various locations, um, throughout the summer. At Rotary Club meetings, um, Burton Club meetings and different things like that. And it'd basically be me doing some of that in the summertime for people in senior centers and if different things, where people who couldn't come to the library or didn't make it to the library. So, but the portal, as Mr. Doll said, will be available all the time. And Christine Jacobs came on last month and expressed her support, um, from the TJPDC to offer up any assistance through the process. And we'll be doing some of that with them in May and June at the open houses to.
And any further questions from the board?
So everything that's gonna be shown next Thursday is what staff has done so far, correct? There's really, planning commission has not really participated yet.
No, no, the planning, that's right. It's, this, this is, um, it's really the TJPDC staff and work that staff has done up to this point. But we, we really want to get these for the next four open houses, public comments and input. Um, again, the other main thing to remember is we're not changing a lot in the comprehensive plan. It's not, we're not like.
It's not a major rewrite.
Major rewrite. It's a compilation of all the different consulted plans that we have. And then the future land use and, um, recommendations, goals and objectives, those will all be new, of course.
I have one more thing. And it's the, and it's the teacher in me. Um, I always like to see things that I know what to expect in more of a structured way. So I would know what are the parts that are gonna happen before I get to the solution. And if it's gonna be, we're gonna meet this time and then you give out a, a couple of dates here and you're gonna do something different here. I can't wrap, it's hard for me to wrap my mind around the whole, the whole project.
Do, do you want to see like a timeline or something?
I have not a plan. Um, yeah.
Includes a timeline.
Yeah.
We, I so agree.
Some way that I can say if I'm going to speak, I know this is what we're gonna be doing. Then you build on that. Of course, you can modify it if that doesn't work.
That's exactly what we did on February 8th with the Planning Commission, is presented a timeline and outline.
So your, the problem is you're a month in and two board members are saying they don't have a grasp for what that is. And we have people in the community who were, unlike any time I've ever seen, really notably wanting to know what's going on and be a part of it. And I can't pass any information to them because I don't know. And at some point, it starts making me even look like I don't know what's going on.
We, we will, we will get, we will get something to the board.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And, and as the Planning Commission, it's being their document, then they will instruct us next Tuesday of how they want you to start receiving information.
We'll, we'll get you something. Don't worry, Smiles.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wonder, this brings up something I wanted to ask. And as a citizen, you know, I, I never, I seldom thought unless there's a hot item on the agenda to, and even then, people had to make me aware of it at times, to go in and look for and see what's going on. And so I understand everybody has access to the website and, and so on. But the reality is, is that there are a lot of people who feel like citizens, who feel like they're not up to date on what's going on and, and just aren't going to every week go onto the county website. So I got wondering if, if there, maybe we already do this, I don't know about it, if there's some, um.
Newsletter.
Fan mail.
Well, yeah, but.
It can't get fast. It needs to come to that mailbox.
Anything that's going on in the county, they, they get the goings on, special things that are happening.
It needs to go in my mailbox. So if I can, why can't we send a newsletter twice a year?
Well, because I.
Oh, periodic. Well, isn't, isn't it worth it? If a citizen wants it, I mean.
You've got to send a newsletter, what, every month? You've got to send a newsletter, what, every month?
Not every month, quarterly or twice quarterly.
If you do it twice a year, you do it maybe with the tax receipts, but that doesn't necessarily keep you up to date.
But it's.
Because some of, some events are not planned, you know, six months in advance. So it's not really, it's not really even quarterly. Quarterly might not.
Are you thinking actual mailing?
You want to do every month.
You have, if you're, if you're going to use mail, right?
I would, I didn't, I was.
To fourteen thousand homes, that's the cost of staff and the time and all that.
And plus, information changes so quickly sometimes. Sometimes by the time you're sending something out, something could change. And it's just, yeah.
Well, that's.
If you want to be engaged and informed, you show up to these meetings. I mean, that's the bottom line. I mean, look at how many people are here.
And that people can't show up to the meeting.
I hear you. Well, well, and as true as that is, I mean, somebody wants to use the term polymorph with me, you know, the X amount of the citizens are polymorphs, that they're really that into knowing what's going on all the time. And and I'm, I'm not saying we should do it. I'm just asking a question of if there was a way for them to go on an email list that 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 went to and. Does fan mail go to?
Oh, yeah.
The citizens?
Yeah, someone signs up, they did.
Oh, we could do something like send it in the mail when they send the taxes with the the link of, this is how you can find out what's going on in your county and give them how to, they can connect to fan mail. Not everybody knows that.
There are so many people don't read the fan mail. Do you have an idea who reads the fan mail?
I do.
Can you count? Because it is a wonderful information. I'm.
I can see exactly how many people open it. I can see exactly how many people delete it. I can see how how many people, you know, just leave it sitting there. And we have about forty four, forty five, I'm sorry, fifty four percent who open it. So that tells me they're, they're doing something with it. If they just delete it, it doesn't show as open. So apparently that's better than industry standard. I don't know what industry standard really means in this place. But I I asked Eric to pull up on the, on the webpage, right from the very front page of the website, there is a link to fan mail. And when you click on that, thank you, Mrs. Booker, for asking me to do that. When you click on that, it takes you to the page. You can submit an item for fan mail. You can look at the current edition of the archives. And you can subscribe all from that page. And we have, I don't remember right now how many we have. Eleven hundred, twelve hundred people are subscribed at the moment. Every now and then, some group in the county will push it out to remind people to sign up. And I can always tell when they do because I get an influx of people who are subscribing.
So it goes out every Friday, or sometimes there may be a special something.
Yeah, oh, there have been a lot in the last two years. And Eric, if you don't mind, click on fan mail, current edition there on the left. So this is what it looks like when it comes out. That that's the actual newsletter itself, so.
Do we post that onto the Facebook page for Flannan County as well?
And it does go out on Twitter and Facebook, yeah.
No TikTok.
And Instagram, too.
I mean, you could do a little short video on the TikTok.
Uh, no, unless you tell me I have to.
Yeah, and all that, that's good. And I don't think we ever stop talking and list, looking for other ways.
I absolutely agree with that.
We have to con- continue to do that.
Always open to those suggestions. I welcome them.
Yep. And so that, and that has links on it for all the board meetings and all, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a calendar included in that.
Jobs that we have, board meetings, how to get onto a live stream, you know, YouTube, you can go back and listen to old meetings, how to pretty much anything you want. It'll, it'll get you to what you need.
I'm glad I asked because then it, I mean, I don't think I ever got it until I was on the board. And so I didn't know that.
That's right.
That everybody can get that. So when people are asking me, I know that I can tell them to get into that. Thank you.
Yep.
I still, okay.
Moving on, next we have public comments. Please limit your, first, if you're speaking with regard to the public hearing.
Nope.
That's at seven. And and second, that would not be the appropriate time. So please limit, limit your comments to five minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board?
Let's hear if anyone on the. I don't see anyone.
All right. So next on the agenda is action matters. Cozette Monachello Affordable Workforce Housing Performance Agreement, Eric Dow, County Administrator.
So first, I will do a really quick presentation. And like I said, and I would really like for then the the folks with the codes at Monachello to come up and kind of give their presentation and then give some time for questions afterwards. All right. So, so again, Pinnacle Construction and Development Corp is a proposed developer for the Cozette Monachello, which is a multifamily housing section, Colonial Circle, they're proposing one hundred twenty four units of affordable workforce housing. And again, the, the housing that's projected or or proposed for Colonial Circle was in the their executive summary for the Brookdale com- complex in, I don't remember if it's Almaral or Almaral or Charlottesville. Again, estimated two and three better rents would range nine twenty five to fifteen hundred per month. And this this project would use fifty to seventy percent average median income, which would be around forty five to sixty five. And I'll let Mr. Park and then Mr. Carrington and Mr. Greer correct me if there's anything that I'm, that I misrepresented. Again, as as part of being able to afford affordable workforce housing, they're requesting real estate tax financial incentives through a development and performance agreement. Again, there's a couple of different models to look at. And I'm not going to read all this, but I think what I'm going to do, I'm just going to kind of go to this chart and and hopefully it's not too difficult to see. Like I said, we can certainly bring this up and ask more in-depth questions after, after they have a chance to present. But again, this is just kind of showing, again, all the numbers are static because we don't know, you know, what tax rates are going to change in the future. We don't know how assessments are going to change. But but looking at it in four different ways, if the land were to say, stay vacant, the current assessed value for the acreage that they're proposing for the next thirty years, this is the amount of of real estate tax revenue we would get. Now, from my standpoint, I don't see that even remotely being a possibility that that piece of land is going to stay vacant for thirty years. The second column is really what they are proposing. Again, it it kind of basically sets the assessed value kind of set from a, from this point moving forward. And so any improvements on the property, they would be taxed at the current assessed value for the next ten years. So you can see years one through ten, the county is still collecting tax at the current kind of vacant land assessed rate. Years eleven through fourteen, once those improvements are in place, they start getting taxed twenty percent additional per year until year fifteen, they're being fully taxed at at the full amount. So over the thirty year period, because that is the term that from, from the tax incentives in the agreement that 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 they have to keep this affordable housing in place, this is the tax that the county would would receive over that thirty year period, one point seven million dollars. If you look at it a couple other different ways, well, if the board says, well, what would we get if we had something else come in? And and to me, this is just my personal opinion. I think the last column is probably the most likely scenario that if something didn't happen, for instance, so maybe within, and and again, the last column uses a four year market maturation plus a two year construction. So again, let's just say that if this didn't happen and say something came forward in four years, or maybe it's three years and we can work into that number, this is the tax revenue that the county would get for that project if if there was a delay in in some type of market rate project moving forward. And so so really, you're kind of looking at the difference of what is, you know, what could happen if if this project didn't go forward? And this is the the real estate tax revenue you would get. Or if the county moved forward more with with this project, with the developer to get affordable housing. And and really, so the delta between those two, kind of the difference is the five hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. And so kind of as, as, as we talked about to the board before, you know, I think the big question for the board is, 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 does the board feel affordable, affordable housing getting implemented in the county sooner or later is, is, is a value and 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 worthy and 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 does the differential in tax revenue that the county would or would not receive? Does that? Is that, is that a reason to move forward with it? And is there, and certainly there may be other benefits. There could also be other things. There are financial things that that could go into this project either way. There's, there's, I I think from every board member's standpoint, they could probably see pros and cons from from both sides of it.
So it does not include any expenses associated with the people living there, right? These projections?
Correct.
No, correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, and again, you know, to to really do an apples to apples, we have to keep the numbers pretty static, just looking at, you know, we know there's going to be lots of things that are going to change, you know, down the road, year twenty two, that you know, the the improvement value is going to be different. We're probably going to have a different tax rate, I would imagine, in year twenty two than we do now. And there's lots of different things. So again, this is just kind of a way to look at and kind of compare some of the figures based upon a kind of a static value. So as we go back, you know, this, this proposal came back to the county, it was probably about a little over a year ago. I think it was December of twenty 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 at this point. So we brought this to the board for three different meetings. We discussed it numerous times. I know some of the board members wanted to go out and and look at the, look at the other projects that that pinnacle construction did. I know Mr. Sheridan drove to a similar project in 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 a complex for affordable housing in Wears Cave. And I know some looked at some of the, I don't know if it's Treesdale or Brookdale. Yeah, in Charlottesville, Almaral area. So at the August fourth meeting, a majority of the board wanted staff to come back with the performance agreement, which which what we have is what we have today. And again, you know, during this time, landowners, developers have been working further to subdivide parcels, record plats. We've worked with the E D A, County Attorney's Office, to to get the agreements done. And the E D A had the performance, development and performance agreement before them, February fourteenth, and they approved it. And now it's, it's just basically up to the board for their consideration. So I I think at this point, I'm going to let, I'm not sure if Mr. Park or Mr. Carrington, who wants to come up, and they can kind of go over their presentation to the board and, you know, give, give an opportunity to ask questions after that.
Thank you, Eric. I drew the short straw, so I guess I've got to come up here tonight.
Just let me know when you want, want me to proceed.
Yeah, sure. After the presentation, I'm not sure I really need to do anything. So thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is William Park, President of Pinnacle Construction Development Corporation in Charlottesville, Virginia. Also with me, my, tonight, my partners, Bo Carrington and Sean Greer. So any questions I can't answer, I'll quickly send them over to them to answer, if you will. So I'm, I'm going to, this is pretty much the same presentation we've had before. But for the benefit of those that have not seen it, I'm going to go through it. I'm going to maybe go a little quicker than I did before. If you want me to stop or slow down, have a question, please do so. But I want to be especially respectful of you all's time as we go forward tonight. So Eric, if you would, location, I think everyone's very familiar with the location on the corner of fifty three. And I don't know the number of the state route that that has Lake Monachello, but right there where the traffic circle feed out is.
Six eighteen.
Yep. Yeah. Next slide, please. And again, the same layout that you've seen before, the, the, the good thing about this is since the last time we've been before you, as Eric said, we, a whole lot more work is going on. I mean, we've been working with the seller and Stanley Martin to develop the master plan, the site plan. We now have a a piece of property where when we came to you before, we did not even have a piece of property. It was part of the larger piece that was there. So the layout has essentially stayed the same, but now we have fully engineered drawings, architectural plans and so forth. So we're very close to getting final site plan approval. Douglas said we could pick it up tonight on the way out, so I'll catch him when we go out here tonight. Next slide, please. As, as Eric said, one hundred twenty four units of a combination of two and three bedrooms, ninety two two bedrooms, thirty two three bedrooms. We also have a community building with swimming pool. The community building has fitness center, leasing office in it. So I want to make it clear, as we said before, we will manage this. Our management company manages it. We have onsite management. And that's part of why we have a project this size. I mean, you have to, first of all, the the demographics show the need or the demand for this. At the same time, we need to have a project large enough where we can put people on staff that are there full time. Also, as Eric mentioned, this is an affordable project, which affordable, there's a lot of definitions of affordable. But when you're dealing with a tax credit project, affordable means those units that are at or below sixty percent of the area median income or average that at the end of the day across those one hundred and twenty four units. And that's what we're doing with this project here. Next slide, please. So here's an illustration, same illustration we did before. This is where we show a certain number of fifty, sixty and seventy percent units. At at that point, we average those units to get at or below sixty percent of the area median income. And that's, that's an I R S requirement that we have to do. Next slide. And so this is the median income chart. You all that are familiar with affordable housing, it's administered by Virginia Housing, the State Housing Authority. Every locality, whether it's county or city, has an income chart. It changes annually. And it's adjusted for family size. So for example, if you're looking at one person living in at at sixty percent of the area median income, they cannot make over thirty nine thousand four hundred eighty to live in to qualify. And that's the maximum income. And and so we have to work with this chart. Next slide, please.
Just one question, Mr. Park, because there was some question last time. I think last board, we were talking about area median income. And so I I think, Mr. Brian, you had talked about, you saw some of the shows, our median income at seventy.
I did.
Oh, Miss Booker, I'm sorry.
That was from the census.
Yes, seventy thousand. But is because of the, the, the tax credit, is it based upon the metropolitan?
M S A.
M S A.
Yes, good question.
Which is the ninety three nine.
Correct, which it has three or four counties here, Miss Booker, but that's exactly right.
Right, okay.
So what does that mean, using that income chart? And this is the same chart we showed you all before, and and maybe some of the salaries have gone up since then. But it just gives examples of specifically those that work for the county. And and it just doesn't take into account private individuals and so forth. But we use this as an example to show some of the salary ranges that are here in the county and who would qualify. Next slide, please. As, as you all know, this was rezoned, this entire site was rezoned back in twenty twenty, June of twenty twenty, a total of three hundred and twenty five units. And that's what's been a little bit exciting about the project and kind of tricky because at the same time, it's not us working by ourselves. We're having to work with the seller and with the other purchaser that is doing the single family in the townhome. So it's a whole lot. We, we're trying to bring together all at one time to do the maximum impact here. Next slide, please. The nice thing about this, and of course, this is, I'm sure I wasn't involved at the time, but this is one reason it was rezoned. It's in designated growth area, which, as you all know, it concentrates the growth in a certain area next to transportation routes and utilities, and then helps preserve the rural character of your county. Next slide, please. So one of the things when we started looking at it from a, a market study standpoint and looking at the demographics of who potentially could live here and and decided that it it looked like the affordability was where where there was a gap in this area. First thing we do is go to the comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive plan, we, we look to see as affordable housing, something that the county feels that it's a need. And once we go to the comprehensive plan, certainly you all are familiar with it. But here are a couple of excerpts from there where comprehensive plan encourages affordable housing for the Ravanna C P A, which is where we are. And to remain sustainable level, the community needs diverse and affordable housing. And we feel, we feel like what we're doing is exactly that. What what's so exciting about this project is that when it's done, it's going to be a mixed use, mixed income type project. Right? We have for sale, single family townhouses. We have apartments that are rental. We have some affordability. And and then we have commercial out there on the corner. So it truly is a mixed use, mixing income project in the growth area to concentrate that growth in one area. Next slide, please. So a little bit more on the comprehensive plan, and this is one of the reasons we're here tonight. In order to make the affordability work, to get down to the rents and based on what things cost today, as you all know, this is one of, one reason we're here. And in the comprehensive plan, and I'll just highlight partnerships are critical to the effective provision of affordable housing. Local government action in collaboration with developers and so forth to create affordable housing. And also, uh, on page one sixty one, it goes on to say, planning commission staff are tasked with the ongoing work to offer incentives for building. Mixed income housing with an emphasis on workforce and affordable housing. So. Certainly, you all are familiar with the comprehensive plan, but I just wanted to stress that tonight, one reason why we're here. Next slide, please. So in summary, total development cost. This was back in August, uh, twenty one million. I think it's gone up since then, unfortunately. Um. Of course, the way we can get this done is a combination of working with you all with the performance agreement. In addition, we work with Virginia Housing with their taxes and bonds. And then lastly, we have to have a low income housing tax credits to fill that gap with equity to go into the project. I think another thing to note that's really important. And and Eric, you hit on a little bit, well, what happens in six years from there, eight years from now? Whether it's market rate housing or whether you go to build affordable housing. When we applied for this to to V H D A, it was in December of twenty twenty. At that point in time, this particular location was a difficult to develop area. And what does that mean? It's a difficult to develop area. That means you are eligible for additional tax credits. Which that in addition to what we're doing here tonight with the performance agreement. Is what enables us, we feel, to do the affordable housing. Well, fast forward to January one, twenty twenty one, it was no longer a D D A. So I think what's going to happen. Once you're a D D A and you're not a D D A, rarely ever do you come back on as a difficult to develop area. So I think in the future, what's going to happen? It's going to make it even more difficult to do an affordable housing project if that's something that the county wants to move forward with. So I. I think it's important to stress that, that it's no longer a D D A, but by virtue of us getting our application in when we did. We were grandfather grandfather that got our foot in the door to enable us to use those extra credits. Very important. And 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 this will be a single purpose entity, an L L C set up. And as I said, it's managed by our company that we've managed for over thirty years in this space. Um, and we are V H D certified management agent. Next slide, please. So in summary, we got a ten year financial incentive to provide affordable housing. As Eric said, years eleven through fifteen, we ramp up twenty percent a year till we get a full assessment. County provides a financial incentive in order for us to do it. Not the first time these performance agreements have been used in other localities. And I I think it's important to note. And this is really important that we're doing thirty years here for affordable housing. And this is deed restricted. So if I'm not here, if Bo's not here, if Sean's not here, it doesn't matter. It runs with the land. This project is affordable for thirty years. So the way we look at it. It's ten years of performance agreement for thirty years of affordable housing. If the county is supportive of affordable housing, I think this is a pretty good deal if this is what everyone wants. Next slide, please. So what I did. Instead of having that big chart, I squeezed it down a little bit, Eric, here to make it work. So, you know, we had estimated a value per unit, which which this is an illustration, quite frankly, that we used when we did out. When we did Brookdale in Charlottesville, as far as the value and so forth. Um, because at this point, when we came before you all before. We didn't have a clue what the assessment was or what the value, because we didn't have a lot. So. I think Eric's gone through it. You can see the difference of what the current valuation is versus what we has as a. A beginning estimated value at stabilization and the difference. Next slide, please. And so I put this slide in here from more of a historical perspective. If we plug in the real estate tax. Payment, uh, what it is now versus the abatement based on the value we established. If you all remember, when we first came to you, it was for a fifteen year abatement. And there was a lot of talk back and forth about the fifteen year abatement. And one of the reasons besides. Making the project more financially feasible. Was it matched with what the investor wanted. The investor has to, the tax credit purchaser has to stay in the project for fifteen years. If we tell the investor, we've got the performance group for fifteen years, they say, that's great. They don't even look at it. If we go to ten years, then the question they have is, all right, when you start ramping this up, how are you going to pay for that additional real estate taxes that you have to pay? And consistent with what we told you before, what we do, and we get to that point. We refinance. We paid down some of the debt. We recast the debt for another thirty or thirty five years. And we, you know, provide spreadsheets and show the difference that we're able to pay it. So it's a little bit more of a uphill. Battle for us with the investor, but. You know, we got through it. So. Let's go to the next slide, and you can see the difference between the the fifteen to ten year abatement. If you look at the pro rata incentive down in the bottom, the million two nine five. Versus, I think the prior was a million seven or a million, yeah, a million eight. That was the difference between the fifteen year and the ten year incentive that we had. So a difference of over half a million bucks. To the county. Next slide, please. So in summary, what does that mean? I I I think it's pretty straightforward. You you all know the initial impact of. Of having this. I mean, the construction, the jobs and so forth there permits. Utilities may not be as big a deal in this county, because I I think Aqua may be the one that gets the fees, but certainly if it if it helps with. Bringing more infrastructure there, it helps with the county. Um, I I think an important thing to note. Is one of the things that we've been working with Stanley Martin, and I think. Again, it's real important that we're going to try to build this all at one time. Right? They didn't. They didn't want a donut hole in the middle of their project sitting out there. At the same time, we don't want to be on an island by ourselves, building an apartment complex out in the middle of the woods. So. It it it's real important that we can do this at the same time. And what that does. That brings people there. The more people that are there, the quicker the commercial is going to end up out there on the road too, because you're going to have more people living there. It's easier for the brokers to sell this. So, um, next slide, please. And and this is a slide that, uh, just shows an economic impact. This is housing Virginia Forward. Um, the methodology, I'm not sure behind it, but we had that in there just to show the short and long term impacts. Next slide. Then I I just, uh, same slide you seen before. I think these are some examples you all have seen, uh, the apartments we've built. Um. This is the type of product.
Brookdale, correct.
That this is, it's it's just like Brookdale. It's a different project, but I mean, it's essentially the same. I I had a photo of it at the time. I didn't have one in Brookdale. So, uh, you can see a combination brick vinyl siding and 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 we try to mix colors up and everything, so it's not sort of monochromatic. Next slide. We'll have a pool there. Um. This gives you some idea of detail that we have. Next slide. And that's it. So, uh, again, I want to be respectful of everyone's time. Th- this didn't change a whole lot from back in August. I I certainly appreciate you all taking the time to consider what we've done. As Eric said, we spent a lot of time. Not only going through the performance agreement with. Mr. Payne and his staff, but the E D A had their own counsel also, and. The same went back and forth a a few times, but I think we got it so it's right. And we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago with the E D A and. Had very good discussion with them on it. So I think the. The format is here on how to do that, and everything's in place. Uh, the last thing we need, I guess, which would be the keystone to the arch that we're trying to do here is for you all to approve it tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Are there any questions from Mr. Parker from the board? Did you have any? Ms. Eager?
I had a question. The, um, one through fifteen years where the tax is six hundred and thirty two dollars. Do does the E D A pay that to you too?
Uh, no, no, we, so we pay, we can't pay below the taxes. Right? That we're going to pay what you're what what you're getting now.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this one through ten is a six thirty two, right?
Correct. And again, we until we had a a parcel and they assessed it. Yeah, we didn't know what it.
We had to guess that.
Yeah, correct.
And your and your rental fee, um, because utilities included in that. Tenants have to pay you too.
I I'm sorry, Miss Booker, one one more time.
The, um, and the rental that you pay. Are are the utilities included in that rental or is that?
No, it so we have a utility allowance that we subtract. So for example, if the water was included. Then, uh, there would not be a utility allowance for water. If it's not included, then we have to subtract that. That's a very good question. We have to do it for electrical. And we have to get that. We have to send it. For example, we would give it to Aqua. They would give us what that is. Then we would give it to whether it's a local co-op or Dominion Power. We would provide this to them, and then we would get what that allowance is. And we have to get that utility allowance, uh, approved by V H D A every year. So it's monitored.
So if I use more than what you've allowed, I have to pay.
Yes. You still pay the electrical, but we take out a utility allowance from the gross rents. Yes, ma'am.
Like you were going to ask something.
I was just going to say something before. This is kind of what I was talking about. I remember, uh. A couple of weeks ago, when I talked about the nine percent and four percent. Y'all are asking, these, y'all are asking for the performance agreement because y'all are only getting four percent.
Correct.
Uh. What's the proper terminology for it?
Well, it's a, not to get bogged down.
Tax credit.
But you're right. So it it's essentially the four percent is half the credit you get for a nine percent. But the nine percent credit you have to compete for. And the way V H D has set it up to compete for, it's going to skew the rents. Not the rents, but the income's very low, which skews the rent. So we would be able, more than likely, we would not be able to have anyone there above fifty percent of the area median income. So when we looked at it, we didn't feel like that fit with what Fluvana County and what we were trying to serve. And if you compete for it, there's no guarantee you're going to get it. Right? That that's the difference. So and you get you you get the four percent credits if you use tax exempt bonds. Okay? And and we get those through V H D A, and it's kind of seamless when we work with.
That that was what I was trying, kind of talking about last week, and that's why they were asking for the performance agreement where. The other group wasn't. Because there's been a much smaller.
Yeah, and 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 the reality is the the four percent, we've seen it can work on its own if we're up in the D C A M S A. Right? Where where the median income up there is. I don't know, hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and sixty thousand a year, because the the rents will match it, but. The 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 issue here, and and if you look at the, that's the reason there's a D D A here. Because there's a limited amount of land in zone that has utilities. In fact, as far as I know, this is about the only site around. So if there's only one site, so to speak, in the county. You can imagine it's fairly difficult to get it, uh, developed.
May I see the chart? I've had, if I was one person, how much they would have to make, two people and so forth. Now you said townhouses and apartments.
And and single family, but we're not doing that. That's.
I know you're not.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah. And and again, to be clear, that's that's one of the things that excites us is we're part of a larger community, which I think is going to make this pretty nice.
And in a three bedroom, I'm assuming you could go to five people. If they wanted to put multiple children, you know.
Yeah, well, it ends up being children, but we we have limits on. We limit to people that can be in there.
Okay.
Right? I mean, because that's.
That's that's another question I'm.
Yeah, that's a good question. And and look, we. We've had some horror stories over the years, fortunately not with us, but you learn stuff the hard way, right? With the management and. This program is real is is regulated. V H D A comes out twice a year to inspect your properties. We have to go through a series of inspections. Um, and and our people are set up to manage this type. And and the other big part of it. Is income qualification. Right? You know, if I have a market rate project, you all can walk in. We pretty much qualify you on the spot. With this. It it just takes time. Rarely ever do we, it it almost hardly do we get it done quicker than a week or two weeks because of what we have to do to get the incomes. And we have to re-certify the incomes every year.
Okay.
So it's a lot of compliance, a lot of compliance.
I was just going to add that 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 I shared your excitement with the idea that it's a mix. You know, mix of people that are there. I think anytime you can. Have communities that are integrated. It's to the benefit of everybody.
Yeah, nobody knows the difference. Nobody cares.
Yeah, well, I was looking, oh, I'm sorry. You sure? I was look, I was looking at these because I was looking at the. I live, I mean, my district is Park Union. It's pretty old people who are already settled. I don't think they're going anywhere. You know, I had our own home. But I was looking at the teachers', um, salaries, where a lot of our. People will need this kind of affordable housing. And in some of the categories of their work. They won't even get to thirty two or thirty seven, forty five thousand dollars a year until they've been working. In the school system at least twenty years. So, um. That kind of, um. Said, I'm not going to, I'm not, I probably not see a whole lot of people. Out of my district moving in that direction.
You you count the income of of. However, many people that are. Age earning.
Lesses. Eighteen and oh, right, if you're over eighteen, you count.
Two people there, you're counting. Combined income of those two people.
Yes.
And you will, you can, can people that are at eighty percent rent these, but just. At a different rate?
Yeah, but but we'd have to offset that with.
Somebody being at thirty or thirty.
Yeah, yeah, that that's right.
And 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 Mrs. Eager asked me a question, but could someone that, could someone pay market rate at this? But do you think you have to have, okay?
No, no, eighty eighty is going to be the.
Eighty is going to be about the max.
Be the top, yeah. And and this is, this is something that the service IRS just put into place a year and a half ago. Right? That you could do this averaging, and it's. It's pretty tricky, but anyway, um, the 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 bottom line is at no time. Can you have the unit so that it's over sixty percent? So that's where, that's where it gets a little.
What happens if it's over sixty percent?
Yeah.
For the year for.
Well, at it, yeah, at the end of the year. That's right. And so what we'll do, and this is a question I haven't been asked, but. How do you all keep up with it? Well, we have to give reports to V H D A. And in other localities, what we do, whatever that report is to V H D A. That's the report we give to the locality and everywhere else so far we've used it, uh, it it's worked fine.
Suppose somebody, um, qualifies. And then they get a raise or their wife gets a job. Do they have to move?
No, great question. They, as long as they don't exceed a hundred and fifty percent.
Okay.
And and I can't, I think we've had one. In all the years we've done this, and I think what happened, he or she married somebody. It was a divorce and married somebody that that's. That's where the extra income, and that's where they all of a sudden jumped above a hundred and fifty percent. And I. And Miss Eager, I can't remember, do we give them thirty days, sixty days to, but but we have to notify them. That you've been re-certified and you can no longer live. That's an excellent question. So, yeah, someone's at fifty five percent this year, and they're at sixty two percent next year. We don't kick them out. Good question.
So if not a fifty percent increase in income, but a fifty percent increase in the adjusted.
Correct. Yeah, that that's exactly right. So so if. So to your point, i- if the, if the income is at, you know, if if we're at ninety three thousand. And then you have to go to a hundred and fifty percent of that. I mean, you can see what someone's got to make. Right? I mean, you look at the fif, you're at the sixty percent level, and if they they can go up to a hundred and fifty percent. They're in at sixty, but. And and that, it just doesn't happen. And I think that's the reason it was put like that, right? Whenever thirty years ago, thirty five years ago.
And if they're marrying somebody or something happens like that, and they're gaining a hundred thousand dollars in income, they're probably going.
That's not a bad deal.
They probably will move into that person's house.
They'll probably take that versus staying in the apartment, huh?
Um, and and I'll just add one last thing, because I know you got a couple of questions. But this was when I went up to Ware's Cave was. Most impressive thing, it was eighteen years old. I couldn't tell. If I look at pictures, I can't tell it's an eighteen year old building. Yeah, I'm no construction guy. But. And when I stopped, everybody I stopped and talked to was happy. And I talked to a couple of people walking dogs, a couple of people came outside to smoke. And they were, yeah, it's great. People on top, if we report something, we ask for something, it's taken care of like that. And that was, that meant the world to me. And then. And no disabled vehicles were allowed to stay in the parking lot. And. The same maintenance guy that started the program at eighteen years ago. Was still the maintenance guy today. So that, to me, told me that they do a good job of. Making sure they're taking care of their employees. Their employees want to be there.
Ms. Sheridan, I just want to add, I I talked to that maintenance guy, and I passed on that compliment to you and. Uh, you know. It was a smile from. And attaboys.
And he's probably a guy like me, like you. That's his neighborhood, but. He takes pride in it, and it you you could tell.
Um, I have a few questions. You mentioned that we. We fell out of the D D A. Do you know why that is?
Yeah, that's a good question. And 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 and, you know, it's a federal designation. And so. I I don't know what happened.
Is it typically based upon need?
It it. I don't know. It's a combination of income. It's a combination, as I said before, land costs, utility availability and so forth, right? Right? So I don't know if there was something, I don't know if they take it into account for just the county or did they look at the entire D D A and one was built somewhere else and you've got somebody in Washington that, you know, it's just plugging in numbers, right?
So, uh, Mike brought up some of a conversation that we had recently, I guess, what, a month ago? I know, uh, two weeks ago, where there was a, um, was a, the Methodist group that was, uh, applying for some change. And I just want to clarify, you are for profit, right? In other words, you're gonna build this for profit.
Yeah.
It's a business you're in.
Right. We're, I, I think we're a pretty good business, but like most people, we're not the benevolent developer.
Right.
Right? You, you know, so, yeah.
I just was clarifying between that was, uh, we're talking about age restricted and so on and, and different restrictions on the property. Just clarifying that this is not similar in that this is.
No, it's not age restricted because when we did the demographic.
But I mean, as far as profitability of the organization.
Well, so let me, let me go back. One reason, and we could set up a nonprofit if we wanted to. So if they're in the competitive pool, which they were probably going for the nine percent credit, then they wanted to be in the nonprofit pool. And there are a number of ways that you can set up a nonprofit to compete in. I, I don't know anything about what you're talking about or what the project was, but I, I'm just saying there, there's a strategy to competing for the nine percent credits also.
I see.
So.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, so I, I can't answer to the other one, but I will say we're, yes, we're trying to make some money.
Yeah.
At the end of the day.
So did you all originally look at, when you first looked at this project, did you first look at if you could do it in the traditional sense?
Meaning not affordable, not using tax credits?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna defer a little bit to Mr. Carrington over here. And I think if he wants to get up and talk about a little bit, he can, but the answer is yes. And, and when Bowen Sean spent a lot of time on the demographic side of it, and give you the example, I think we talked about this before. I, i- if you look at the market rate side, sure, maybe there's a demand for forty units right now. Right? But there's not a demand to do the number of units on a market rate because all of a sudden with the market rate, you gotta charge the same thing as you do for the market rate in Charlottesville because you don't have the tax credits. And then when you do that, someone's just gonna live in Charlottesville because of the services that are available there versus here. So it gets, it gets fairly complicated. So, um, I think the short answer is, yes, we looked at it. No, it wasn't feasible to do the number of units that, that we're trying to do to make it work.
Thank you.
We actually used the same.
Could you do me a favor? Come up here so we can get, like, every, everybody can hear. And don't go too far.
Can y'all hear me better this way?
Yeah.
So in two thousand seventeen, Fluvana County put together a, um, a senior housing report, uh, with a team out of Atlanta. And we actually used the same market study analysts to kind of give us a market study report, which gave us insight into it being more of an affordable play than a market rate play. Thank you.
And I'll just tell you, Mr. Fairchild, those two guys both played lacrosse. He didn't bring bouncers.
Um, and, and you all, do I understand right that you all would not do this project without the, uh, subsidies from the county on the taxes?
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Parker.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out here. All righty. All righty. Do we have any other questions from the board? Any discussion?
Any discussion amongst the board?
I mean, I believe I'm going correctly when I do that.
Um. Did I read that somewhere? If you, when they build the first building, if it's not occupied, if, if they can't get occupancy, uh, the project is off?
No, there is, let me think here. There, were you looking at the agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to think where, where it was. Had to do with the certificate of occupancy.
Right. Yeah. It would be void. Um, to, to read that. And that was, yeah, and that was a one misread word. Yeah, I don't, I wish I had paid attention to the page number. Uh, but anyway, Mrs. Eager said.
Oh, I just saw no.
Yeah, there's some of that where the project should be fully completed within seventy-two months. That was a thirty-six month something. But for, for the first building of the project.
First building has to be done within thirty-six months. And then the whole project has to be complete within seventy-two months.
Right.
And, um, if the developer does not require the certificate of occupancy for the first building, I think you're, something's sliding around on me.
Agreement, yeah.
Agreements null and void and no further force or effect and the county shall not have obligations. Hey, so, so again, it's a development and performance agreement. They've got a, they've got to develop and they've got to perform per this agreement, meaning they've got time, timeframes that they've got to meet. And they've got to meet, um, from an income, income standpoint too, to make sure and certify that, that it is an affordable project. And if they don't, then there's, there's provisions that, that make the, the agreement null and void.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty, do we have a motion?
Well, I've, I've got some. Well, I'll start with a question. Do, do we know if, have we ever done in Fluvana County any type of subsidized housing?
No, not that I'm aware of.
So this would be the first.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, it, when I look at the, the proposal and we have the charts that compare income, but if we were a public company, a publicly traded company that, and, and I always think of that like what we are. We represent a lot of stakeholders, including financially. And, um, we're a board of directors entrusted with their lifestyle and their income. And the board of directors that was being posed for a for-profit company, and I didn't think about this until after we talked today, would, would be shown the expenses to. So although we have these charts that show the changes in revenue, reality is that in Fluvana County, on average, residences create, uh, a, a negative cash flow, have an expense that's greater than income. And so when we look at numbers, and that is part of what we're looking at, there's, you know, we have four columns here to look at. Our expenses, it's not just if we had the, if we didn't have the property developed, we wouldn't be collecting any taxes. And once again, we see that what's going to create tax revenue and personal property and so on. But we know that we, that we increase taxes in Fluvana as we grow residentially. And I, I just, so I asked Eric today on the phone roughly how much the proposal would cost us over the, I think, what, fourteen years, wasn't it?
Yeah, you looked at the first fourteen years.
Yeah. And I think you said it at eleven, ten, at ten years, it was roughly nine hundred and fifty thousand. Now, this is, this is just in tax revenue, not, not including the cost of the expenses of people living there. So just in tax revenue roughly, nine hundred and fifty thousand over fourteen years is about one point one million dollars in tax revenue. So that's revenue that the taxpayers, all of our, um, stockholders have to pay or, or take out of their, their, um, their share of the stock. And then that doesn't include expenses. So we know that these are gonna create expense. They're gonna bring in people that aren't from here. They're gonna need more services, schools, fire trucks and so on. If you just did ten percent, rounded all off at one point three million, this is gonna be a cost to Fluvana County's taxpayers of one point three million dollars. And it's our first government subsidized housing. And I'm not, I, I just don't think that one, that we're in a position where Fluvana needs to do some, start doing large-scale subsidized housing. And two, where we should be spending our taxpayers' money on it. And this project, you know, it was said that it was originally looked at for profit, i- i- or just regular type housing. It's not that this necessarily was the great wonderful thing first for Fluvana. And I applaud you. You're in the, you're capitalist and God bless, we wouldn't be America without it. But this project, if the numbers would have worked, it, it wouldn't have been, uh, that's where they're asking us for that money. They would have built, uh, uh, apartment buildings that were self-sustaining. And when you approve this development, that's what you approve. Now we're coming back and we're saying, not only are we building this development that a lot of citizens are concerned about, but now we're asking the citizens to help pay for it. So, um, I'm just, I'm just concerned about how we got here and the precedence that it's setting.
Well, I think there's some significant differences, really. And I think that, that the premise is at error to begin with. I mean, everybody says that rooftops just cost. And, you know, it's easy to say that, but we're also a community. We're not a for-profit organization. And not every taxpayer is a net loss to the community. My daughter attends.
I have to say, we have a lot of history. No, no, but we have a lot of history.
Let, let me finish.
All right. You, you've inserted stuff too. So.
No, I'm just.
I'm not interrupting. I thought we were having a conversation.
Yeah, it's, I'm just saying that, you know, I have one daughter. I think the cost to the county has been about seventy-two thousand dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood for my one daughter. I don't call emergency services. I haven't used those in my life yet. I pay my property taxes. My daughter's out of school. I've been living in the community for twenty years. I pay my real estate taxes. I pay my income taxes, of which the community gets part of it. I pay my sales taxes because of shopping for that. And so overall, I'm probably a net contributor to the taxpayers, not a net withdrawer. We're not just a community where we can say, we're not gonna grow. We're not gonna do anything because we just want to stay the way we are. The fact of the matter is that, you know, our country is growing. People come, they come to places they like. It's the quality of the community that we build. And if we only have a community where rich country club folks that are old come in and stay in our community and have no kids, then that's a very narrow community. It's not the real community that, that is America in my opinion. So I, I think this is a very, you know, uh, um, a very, a very misunderstood and a very common argument that people, that people use and say, it is a net loss. If it is a net loss, if every rooftop is a net loss, then every county is suffering the same net loss. Okay? Because every county's doing it. So you can't look at it and just say, it's a net loss of any rooftops. This is a net gain for our community because we are bringing in housing that we don't have, a type of housing that we don't have, a type of housing that is needed for certain members of our community. I mentioned it last time. Rents are skyrocketing in this area, absolutely skyrocketing. I was able to increase my rents on one of my property by four hundred dollars from one year ago. This is happening everywhere. Affordability is a crisis. That's why the T J P D C gets together and tooks and takes a look at the entire area from affordability perspective. Not everybody is making ninety thousand dollars. There are plenty of people who don't make that. There are plenty of retirees who don't make that. So if we're trying to build a community, we need to look at the stock of what we provide in that community. Right? Why do we have a theater? Why do we have Pleasant Grove? You know, why do we have, you know, fancy golf courses or whatever? Why do we do those things? Because we're trying to bring value to our community. We're not a for-profit corporation. And I, and I just find this argument, you know, to be very, very, um, false in, in its narrative. Yeah. So that, that's all I say.
Sure. Okay. So, um, to the dollar side, we've got the data. And, and it's, it's, no- nothing, nothing is absolutely the same at every household. That's why we use averages. And so on average, residents are a net negative because we end.
I don't know. I don't know that. That has been presented. I don't know. The last time that was presented by staff, I don't know if they looked at all the factors. And I don't know that they looked at the benefit of the community.
Are we doing, Mr. O'Brien? Am I talking?
Not him.
No, no.
You said, you asked me a question. I was like, he said, we know that. I said, no.
I, I didn't ask you a question.
All right, guys.
And the point is, Tony, we're having a conversation. Yeah, it, we hadn't, shouldn't protect each other's time from shutting others off. If, if we, when you are talking numbers, when you are talking numbers, then this will have a cost and it will bring in people to Fluvana. Look, I said it last meeting. I understand that we're all a region together, but I'm not gonna invite people to come live in my extra bedroom. Um, we have a, a responsibility first to our taxpayers and to our shareholders that we have today. And it's not closing things off. We're not gonna close off growth to Fluvana. It's managing. It's not even, we're not even promoting it. We're, we're trying to look for it. We're reacting to it. There's no part of this presentation that Fluvana said, that our board said, we want this, we're looking for it, please come to us. We're reacting to what comes in front of us.
We have in our comprehensive plan, says this is what we need for the diversity.
Talking about this development.
But we don't have affordable housing into that.
Well, we do have affordable housing into that.
I think we do too.
Well, I mean, yes, you may say that, but I'm telling you right now that there are a lot of places that are very expensive. It is not the same place it used to be. Yes, you may be able to find a place that you can live for seven hundred and fifty dollars that's torn down and doesn't have a community and, and is out in the middle of the field. Yes, I'm not saying you can't, but that's not affordable housing. That's not really bringing everything together.
Well, I, I rent a couple of, uh, homes and they are affordable.
And I would suggest you could probably get more if you wanted to.
Yeah. Well, one is a policeman with a family and the other is a retired teacher. And I, I don't raise the rent.
No, that's a decision.
And you're taking care of them because it's nice to have that police officer nearby.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And the retired teacher, she's been there for thirty years.
And, and, and in my rental agreements, I have a three percent increase. And when they leave, I look at the market rate. You know, the market rate is now different.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. Did you have any other points you wanted to make?
Thank you.
All righty. Do we have a motion?
Under the board supervisors approved the development and performance agreement with exhibits one through four between Fluvana County, Economic Development Authority of Fluvana County, Virginia, and Monticello Co. Realty Partners, L P, for the purposes of developing affordable housing and by agreeing to provide semi-annual grants through the D D A based on certain percentage of the taxes paid by the developer due to the increased real estate assessment subject. Two, and agreeing to the terms of this agreement that authorize a county administrator to sign this agreement on behalf of the county after approval as to form by the county attorney.
Do I have a second? Got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mrs. Booker. I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I will tell you right now, I struggled with this decision. I think I said about the exact same thing I'm gonna say right now. A long time ago, I struggled with this decision, but I see our young people coming through and let me, let me finish. I make my point, man, please.
I'm not saying one word. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Um, but they don't have places to leave, live. And they have to leave. They have to go to Charlottesville. They have to go to Richmond. Um, and I am definitely for the rural nature of our county. But I was totally impressed by the way that things were run. There are people on the, on duty, on staff, on site. And they help maintain everything. So I will make this short. Chair vote tie. Motion passes three, two. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, B, emergency procurement, fire apparatus purchase. Ms. Toller.
Ms. Toller, uh, she couldn't be here. She, uh, she, she hurt herself. And so I'm gonna.
Okay, Mr. Doyle.
Help, 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 helping her daughter move and fell down. So I'm.
Hey, there's, nevermind, I'm gonna do that.
Uh, so again, uh, this is for a fire apparatus purchase on F Y twenty-two budget, uh, two point nine million was budgeted for fire and rescue apparatus. In September twenty-one, the board increased that by four hundred and seventy-one thousand, um, just due to price increases. Um, I think it's two or three meetings ago, the board already, um, approved three contracts for, for some fire apparatus for two point eight million dollars. Um, so for this particular, um, uh, piece of equipment, this attack twenty brush truck replacement was planned for a total of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, currently, uh, attack twenty is out of service and unable to get the appropriate parts for repair because of the age of the vehicle, these parts are no longer available. Um, and then ordering a vehicle, uh, to be built will take around two years to complete. Um, there's actually a general fire equipment. They have a demo model that's basically ready to go. Um, and they're willing to sell, sell to the county and that, which county can take possession of it within two months. Um, one thing to just note about this vehicles, uh, about, about the apparatus. So, so remember you got the chassis, which is the, the truck. And then you've got the equipment itself. So the chassis itself is a twenty sixteen. Um, so, so the manufacturer.
So the chassis itself is a twenty sixteen. Um, so so the manufacturer's warranty is out on the truck, but the vehicle has just over four thousand miles on it, so has very low miles. Um, all the fire equipment on it, you know, um, everything that goes on the back of it um is all going to be under warranty um from general equipment from for one year after purchase. Um, basically due to the nature of the vehicle and and the negative effect on public safety to wait to build a new one. Um, there's a request to to purchase this truck on an emergency procurement basis. Um, so this vehicle, the purchase price is two hundred and seventy four thousand and some change, two hundred and thirty nine thousand was planned and budgeted. Um, Fork Union, um, Fork Union Fire Company, I I know Chief. Okay, so so Chief Haley is online and 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 they had committed to using their 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 Fork Union aid localities funding to fund the difference of of what was budgeted and the price of this truck came in so they could, so they could give this uh vehicle.
Um, I I will add this much. The company that they're working with might be under a different name, but they're the same ones that did our attack truck and our brush truck.
For Kent Store.
For Kent Store. And the last time, well, I won't say the last time. We probably have taken something down there since then. But I drove down there one day with my son to take one of the trucks down there. And you literally drive, well, I think he's got a new shop built now, um, because they're expanding a little bit. But it is a local guy. I drove right up to his house. We were right by his house, turned right and went to the barn. And that's where he did his work. Um, and he does high quality work and he makes sure he's former volunteer down in Halifax. And he makes sure he gets it back as quick as he can because he knows what it means to a community to not have it.
And 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 just just one thing too. So the so the old brush truck, again, it's I I I don't know the 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 year of it. So again, all the equipment on the back is 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 you can't get parts for it. The chassis itself is still in operational um status, but but due to the age of it, not necessarily from a from a fire rescue standpoint. I talked to Public Works. We think we we might be able to um uh repurpose the truck itself because it's it's basically uh
With all the boxes on the back of it and everything.
Get rid of the box. I mean, it's basically an F three fifty, four fifty model vehicle duly that vendors that there's some purpose from the county that we might be able to utilize it for like a a flatbed haul truck or or put a dump body on it or something like that.
What um is it? They have to use their aid to localities to do the forty thousand. It's not the
Thirty five.
Thirty five thousand. Is another way that that could be taken care of?
Well, yeah, I mean, the board can certainly approve. The board can approve whatever they want if they want to fund it out of a different.
Do most fire might, do they use?
We usually, we 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 usually use some of our own, but I think I hear Chief Alley rumbling around online. That, yeah, I I I could tell who it was. It wasn't Chief Constantino. That was smaller rumble, Chief Alley.
I I have some information on the truck. So um to add to the county administrators for the uh presentation, the truck isn't currently completely out of service. It's got many quirks, but our operators that operate it regularly are able to work around it for now. So we're still using the truck. However, the parts to fix the truck are no longer available um with the with that year chassis with the fire truck body. Um, the truck that we're talking about, it it is a two thousand one truck. It has thirty three thousand five hundred and eighty eight miles and has two thousand three hundred and eighty four hours on it. It is a Ford F five fifty. Um, it already has a PTO shaft because the 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 pump is a like a fire engine. It's it's works off the truck motor. So hydraulic tank and a and a and a dump truck bed, it would make the county government a great vehicle for a long time. Um, and and it's been well maintained over the years. We found this truck. I I just don't think we can wait two years and with the current issues on getting chassis, that's what we're looking at. Um, we found this truck. I spent a lot of time with it this past weekend. It was at the beach. Chief Pullen and I spent about an hour with it. Thursday night, I was with it all day Friday and part of Saturday. Uh, it's a solid truck. Um, once it it voted yes tonight, once the once the contracts are in place tomorrow, Mr. Larry, the owner of General Fire Equipment, is going to order the pump and tank to go on the back of it. Uh, fabricate a hose tray and we've got a couple compartment changes to make um that were previously built. But we'll have the truck in a much shorter time. Um, the only thing that would hold it up past a couple of months is if um you you're getting parts in or something. And and in today's world, we all know how that is.
I ask Chief Harris. It's a good truck. Um, are other people bidding for that truck? Do we have a timeframe that we need to make sure that our name is number one to get that truck?
He is considering the truck sold until the third, but if if the board votes no tonight, he's moving to the next on the list. Um, I I I found the truck pretty quick when he posted it for sale. We were second on the list. Appomattox was was first up. They they didn't come through and and they came to us. So it's it's kind of in in the board's hands for tonight.
Thank you.
I'm willing to make a motion.
And no?
I I'd just say Andrew talked to me about it a few days back and um it seemed to me that there's no other option really on the table.
My fear, my fear for waiting two years is we've seen the price of fire apparatus exponentially grow.
Yeah.
And we can get a good apparatus right now that we know the guy that takes care of it. And you can make a phone call, take it down there to him and he'll fix it right then.
Mr. Sherman, one more thing to add too is is just like you said, um, we already have a relationship with this company. And from what I've heard from Chief Pullen and some of the other officers and and people in the Kent Store Fire Company, um, they're very satisfied with Mr. Lowery, his work. Um, they, you know, he he continues to work with them today. If they want to move equipment around, need compartment changes, he fabricates stuff for them. Uh, just a great company. And um also, you you know, there there was some question about the the year of the truck. However, brush trucks, when we buy them, they they go to and from calls, but at short distances, um you don't put a lot of miles on them. So when you buy a brand new one, yes, you have a warranty on it. However, um, you don't get anywhere near enough miles to to before the year a part of the warranty runs out. And 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 usually you don't put enough miles on it before little bugs start happening anyway. So you usually wind up paying for those repairs anyway.
All right. Miss, Miss Eager?
Uh, I move the board of supervisors approve the emergency procurement contract between Fluvana County and General Fire Equipment, Inc. for the emergency purchase of a two twenty sixteen Ford F five fifty crew cab, four by four brush rescue fire unit totaling two hundred and seventy four thousand three hundred and forty one dollars and further authorize the county administrator to execute the agreement subject to approval as to form by the county attorney.
And before I say anything else, Chief Alley answered this one for me. This one's going to come to you with everything already on it. At that price, that's it, right?
Yes. That that's what the fault takes, everything that's, everything else is already on it. The truck itself is built.
Yeah, its hoses or everything are already on it. So they don't remember how people have already.
They're raising the money to the thirty five thousand.
They're they're going to pay the thirty five out of there. Yeah, yeah. But I'm saying we usually have to wait until we get stuff and then put, get the truck and then put the stuff on it. This one's just going to drive in the door, ready to use.
Well, the the, as far as equipment, if that's what you're talking about, everything on the current attack twenty is there's nothing wrong with it. That all the equipment will just transfer to that truck. Um, maybe that once we receive it, it'll be out of service probably for a a a week or two because it's going to have to go to the radio shop and have the radios moved and, you know, that kind of stuff, but um other than that, that'd be it.
Yeah, so it's just going to be on the road quick. All right, that's the only point I was trying to make. You got a motion made by Miss Eager, seconded by Mrs. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, chief. Y'all done over there? Y'all all done?
Yeah, yes, sir. I'm back at the firehouse. I just couldn't make it over there in time. I'll I'll be back for the work session later.
I was headed your direction until the they said it had knocked down. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Presentation, yes, sir. Presentation C, tobacco tax revenue. Okay, let me start that one over. Tobacco tax revenue towards tobacco use prevention. Dr. Bonds.
Yeah, Dr. Bonds isn't here. Actually, we have some um, we've got some students from uh from UVA. Um, and 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 they're going to be presenting uh the information here. So Kelly and Miss Harris, do you have them on there unmuted?
We're here. Hi.
Okay, there you go. All right.
Just let us know when you want, want me to proceed on the slides.
Okay, sounds good. Um, hi, everyone. My name is Trudy and I'm a third year global public health major at UVA.
And I'm Pranusha and I'm also a third year and I'm a cognitive science major at UVA. And we're both part of the ACS CAN um organization.
Yeah, we're part of the UVA American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network and we're here to talk to you today about the impact of cigarette taxes on public health efforts. Um, can we proceed to the next slide, please? Okay, so first we want to thank you for voting to increase the local cigarette tax by forty cents, which is the maximum amount allowed. Fluvana County has set the standards extremely high and we want to continue those standards into increasing cessation efforts. Today, we request that five to ten percent of the cigarette tax revenue in fiscal year twenty four goes towards tobacco cessation and prevention efforts. We know that this will, number one, reduce tobacco use. Number two, support our most vulnerable communities that have been most impacted by tobacco use. And three, prevent the initiation of tobacco use among our youth. Um, next slide, please. Before we go into the impacts of our ask in more detail, I first wanted to highlight the impacts of cigarette use. Cigarette smoking is a leading cause of preventable death in the United States, causing more than four hundred, four hundred and eighty thousand deaths each year. More relevant to the current issue of COVID, cigarette use is a COVID risk factor, which means that individuals who smoke cigarettes are at a higher risk of negative outcomes from a COVID infection compared to those that don't smoke. These negative outcomes from COVID can cause dire consequences to not only the smoker, but also their loved ones at home and those that they work with. Next, please. Um, so we wanted to give you guys a regional smoking overview in comparison to adult smoking and youth smoking and show you that the problem is in both. So first we see on the left a graph of the percentage of adult smokers. And we see that the healthy person twenty twenty three goal is at five percent. And almost all counties, including Fluvana County, is much higher than this five percent level. Moving on to the current youth nicotine use. While cigarette use is lower and below the healthy person twenty twenty three goal, which is great, the use of E N D S, which are electronic nicotine delivery systems, are way above the healthy person twenty twenty three goal. And we know that the higher the chances of them smoking conventional cigarettes later in life is higher with their use of these electronic cigarettes, which means that it's extremely important for us to reduce these levels immediately as nicotine is a highly addictive substance and can cause huge, um, can cause drastic consequences in their adulthood. Next slide, please.
So out of the many tobacco users, data has shown that seventy percent of the current users have an initiative to quit smoking. And out of the seventy percent, only fifty five percent take an initiative to go on with their plans and goals. But out of those, only eight percent are successfully able to quit. And this drastic reduction percentage is definitely not encouraging and points us towards the idea that there is this is primarily due to the lack of support and resources available for these people to like reach out to and get aid from external services. And we know that quitting is a challenging process, so we believe that it is important for these people to have this support available for them. And we do know that cigarette taxation will have a positive impact in motivating our community members who smoke to consider quitting, also prevent youth initiation, as we mentioned previously. And however, it is vital to remember that nicotine is a very, very highly addictive drug. And withdrawing from it has both mental and physical repercussions. So it makes it much harder to withdraw from it and also to move on from its addictive um properties. Uh, therefore, the funds raised by cigarettes should be reinvested in public health efforts to help these tobacco users go through their quitting journey effectively. So coming on to the funding aspect, currently there's very little funding at the state level to support people who want to quit smoking. Only fifty five cents per person is invested in Virginia's only statewide cessation service, which is the state's quit line. And the median for the United States, however, is two dollar forty one cents, which is much higher than what we have at Virginia. So that kind of shows how Virginia has a lot of room for improvement. And this low funding has impacted our community by restricting the quality of cessation services we can provide and also leads to inconsistent cessation medication support. So for instance, this quit line, because of its low volunteer abilities and also its low funding, we're able to get one call or not able to be like follow up with the people call and also provide enough support for them to make sure that they're accountable. So with this extra funding, we would be able to do that and proceed with those goals. So locally, Fluvana County actually doesn't have any funding specifically for these tobacco cessation programs currently. So in order to fix this local issue, we believe that it's important for the local community to come together and implement such changes to either support tobacco users to help quit or provide resources for them so that they can separate themselves from this addiction that they don't want to be with. Next slide, please. So if you guys, if we believe that these funds should be reinvested in public health efforts, these are some of the evidence based ways that we believe are the most effective implementations for the revenue funds that would be acquired. So we would say you can invest in evidence based, community based cessation efforts. We can invest in ongoing community engagement to evaluate and lead cessation and prevention efforts and invest in youth leadership for prevention and raise awareness of cessation resources and support.
So finally, just wanted to restate that we're requesting for five to ten percent of the cigarette tax revenue to go towards tobacco cessation and prevention efforts. This can be in any way that you all deem fit. And we listed the ways that we, that are evidence based ways that have worked. And we think will continue to work, especially in Fluvana County. Um, that's all we have for today. Does anyone have any questions? And thank you for listening to our ask and I hope you guys consider it.
Thank you very much. You ladies have done a wonderful job.
Good job. That was my first question. We did that taxes. Are we going to have any programs to help people?
But is is uh the intention that that is going to be bundled or channeled through the TJ PDC's monitor or is that coming back to us and we just look at the revenues?
You have the funding?
That that they're their request, right? Would that essentially be something that's happening at the regional level or is that something?
No, that's, no, that's, I mean, because again, from from the agreements for the cigarette tax board, all those revenues that come through there go back to the localities. Um, uh, VDH did a presentation to the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board and then they're kind of coming, bringing the presentations to the localities because the localities are the ones that can determine what they want to do with with those revenues from the cigarette tax. So no, it it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be done through the through the TJ PDC. It's going to really be up to the board to say, do they want to start a program? Do they want, as 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 they mentioned, I I think I saw someone about a um a a coordinator through VDH or or is there some program that the board is interested in funding through VDH that would, that would go for uh um tobacco cessation or prevention efforts?
And then a second question for the presenters. Um, any any sense or idea as to why um Virginia's contribution is so much lower than the average? I think you've mentioned fifty five cents versus two dollars and forty one cents uh as a national average.
We are, I'm personally, I'm not too sure for why. I'm assuming it's because of it's just how the budgeting worked out, but I can get back to you on that by like talking to our the representatives for the health district. But as of now, I don't have a like a particular answer for you.
Well, thank you.
So I want to belabor this because it's a long thing, but of course I'm new to this. I wasn't here when this all came about. And just, can somebody just give me a short synopsis on? How did it come about? Did the state initiate this? The 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 state gave additional taxing authority to localities, one of them being cigarette tax. And so as of the past July, um, it enabled localities to implement a cigarette tax locally. Um, instead of Fluvana doing its own administered cigarette tax program, we are working through um, which was created through multiple locales, I think eight, the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board, which is administered through the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. But again, it's, you know, um, all more. But again, it's, you know, um, all morale city Charlottesville, Augusta County, Nelson, Green, Green, I believe, and some other. So we are all a part of a board. And they, they administer the program. They work with, um, distributors of, of, of cigarettes and, 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 and the stamp taxing process. And so they administer the program, they do compliance, actually the Blue Ridge Cigarette Tax Board, because I'm on the board. They are right now hiring for a compliance officer to go out and, and go through and make sure that all these businesses that are selling cigarettes, that, that they're doing it appropriately. And so we get, we get revenue.
All right. Hey, guys, did we have anything else for the ladies? Are we getting to turn the ladies loose?
We could turn them loose.
Uh, anybody else? Thank you ladies so much. Okay, we're getting back into board business.
Thank you.
Again, I don't want to labor, but they're asking for something that I need to know.
Oh, no, no, no. I, I just, I just was trying to see if we could tell them that they were sitting there very patiently and.
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, the Dillon Rule was rescinded for that.
Cities and cities and localities had different taxing authorities that were not given to the counties. So now the state went back and told the counties, I believe, that this is something that the cities and towns are doing, that we will give this to you.
So, so the revenue comes, it's coming through T J P D C?
Yeah, I mean, since they're administering it, you know, if, if the county had to do it, we would have to have people that monitor the program. So from economies of scales, we have one entity.
Instead of having eight different people to do the same job, we're going to allow one or two, three people to do it. And then.
And how does P T J P D C pay for that stuff? A piece of that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So there is, there is, um, so, so there is, uh, there's an agreement and there's a, and I don't remember the percentage. One, all the localities had to pay a proportionate share of one-time startup cost. You know, a compliance person's going to have a vehicle, some computers. But, but additionally, ongoing costs would just be deducted on the proportionate share of the revenues. And I, I don't remember what the amount is right now. It's, it's a fairly, it's a, it's a reasonable.
Yeah, it just wouldn't make sense for Green, for us, Nelson, to have somebody.
So then out of our percentage, they're asking for.
They're, they're.
Five percent, five percent.
So, 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 so when it's fully implemented, and again, since it's brand new, we don't really know what that's going to look like. But, but, but the estimates go anywhere from a hundred ninety thousand up to two hundred ninety thousand of what we will get in cigarette tax revenue after expenses, after what we paid into, into, for the program. In this current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, that's in the budget right now, I budgeted on the low side because I'm not sure what, what we're going to get at, uh, two hundred thousand. So if they're wanting, you know, ten percent, that's, you know, twenty thousand or five percent of ten thousand to go towards some type of whatever the program.
To be clear, they being the Blue Ridge Health Department.
Yes. Yeah. And, and, and they are, um, and when I say they, the, the young ladies that were here, um, doing, uh, doing the presentation, this was kind of, this kind of goes through the Blue Ridge Health District.
Kind of like their internship time deal.
So one last question. And when, when I was on the board in two thousand and eleven, our administrator wanted to, uh, B poll tax. And I asked him, why would we do a B poll tax? And he said, because we can. I'm wondering, uh, why we put this tax in place? I'm not saying that maybe against you, I'm just wondering what the rationale was. Did we do it because we can?
Well, I mean, I mean.
Diversify. I think that's one of the things that we could diversify.
Right. I mean, and, and, you know, the, could you look at the revenues that, and I think you've made, you haven't made any budget presentation, but we have a spreadsheet that shows the various different sources of revenues that other counties have. You know, that gives them a competitive advantage when it comes to quote unquote, the real estate tax rate and what that looks like because that's a focus. So, you know, the common thinking is that, so that, so that county has one of the highest real estate tax rates. But we also have some of the fewest levers that we can actually use to reduce that tax rate. So you're really not comparing apples to oranges. You're comparing to other counties that have three, four, five different.
Like a meal stack. So in the, in the administrator's budget, proposed budget, um, is that line itemed in there or?
Uh, yes. And in, in the revenue section, in the revenue section, there's no, there's no expense. Yeah, the revenue's in there, budgeted in there, but there's no line item expense for what the counties, it, it, it is, it's an offset of.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to revenue side. And that always will be right. So.
Oh, yeah.
Until we voted out.
I, I want to be sure it's not just diversifying, not, I want to be sure it's not just adding to the tax that it truly diversifies and takes some of what we have to use, what we have to take off the real estate tax.
Well, that will be two hundred thousand dollars. If, if we give raises, that'll be two hundred thousand dollars. We don't have to raise the real estate.
Yeah, I think of it this way, we're, we're, and we'll have this budget discussion in a few minutes. You know, we, we have a one million shortfall with a, a net neutral budget presented by the county administrator. Um, depending on other revenues that are presented, that would be a three cent increase if we funded the entire school request. Um, that would, would have been another point seven five if we were getting the revenues from the cigarette.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to be sure where, how it's accounted for. So it's always seen and known about forevermore and just doesn't fall into more water.
And, and, and there was discussion too a little bit that, that, that implementing a tax may reduce those, uh, that smoker or, or.
Yeah, that's a humane point to it as well. Not only just.
All right. I think procedurally, the, the, the question you're going to have is how to implement, assuming you want to implement it, how, how you would implement it. And I think the answer is on the, the debit side of your, of your budget.
Right.
Uh, and I will say that, that I don't see any way that you could do this today forever. It would have to be an annual, an annual.
Yeah, right.
So when do we, um, make the decision for the request for these young ladies? Do we make that at a later time?
Well, again, now the, the one thing from the presentation, they're asking for fiscal year twenty-four. Again, we're, we're just considering fiscal year twenty-three at this point. And I think until we actually know what our revenues are, I think it may be a little premature to say what we're going to.
It would definitely not be he was to do this. And then all of a sudden our revenue is seventy-five thousand and not two hundred thousand.
Well, the other thing is, it's good, it goes back to the question I was, I was raising about going forward in time. When you would do this to put it into place would be in the budget for twenty-four.
Correct. And you might.
And you. And it may not be ten percent every time.
Correct.
That could change.
Yeah, just, my, my point is you can't lock it in.
Right.
You can lock.
All right, guys, we are already at the time we're supposed to be starting the next one and we got dinner.
Can I make one suggestion just about that? Would it maybe be ideal to, to go through the public hearing at least, since it's, we're supposed to do it at seven o'clock and then break for closed session and then go into budget work session?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It should be.
All righty.
We didn't do the, um.
Consent agenda. We can do the consent agenda at the end of everything, correct?
Well, you can.
There we go. Next up is the consent agenda. D, minutes of February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. E, minutes of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. F, proclaiming, proclaiming March as American Red Cross Month. G, C R M F, F C H S Track and Field Equipment. H, C R M F, Maintenance Shop Generator, Mr. Kreiter. I, C R M F, Various Damages From The January Twenty Twenty-Two Snowstorm. J, Building Services Worker One Job Description Update. Is there anything you want to pull from the consent agenda?
I just, I just had a comment on one thing. I meant to call Bunky on a couple hour trip home. And as, um, Eric and I agreed today, it was kind of interesting that track and field equipment was brought into this. It's, it's not like a, as we talked about, a skid steer broke and they got to come up with somebody to fix it. It's more of a, seems like more of a wear item. So it's interesting that it would fall into, it would come to us in this means, but I mean, I'm, I'm a vote for it.
Uh, anyone else? All right. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented D through J.
Second.
Motion's made by Ms. Booker, seconded by Ms. Seagull. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business?
Um, I know that we're picking up, you know, the damaged trees and hence, and after we'd finished with the storm, trash is really very.
Okay.
I know it's the same thing when I was driving the road.
Well, and it, and it's really easy to see it now because everything's down. So. Oh, all righty, folks. Well, let me find my public hearing thing here.
Mr. Chair, did you do second public comments?
Should I do the public comments before I do the public hearing, Fred? Or it doesn't matter? I'm going to do the public hearing first and then we'll do the public comment real quick. All righty. Next up is the item tab K, Public Hearing For An Ordinance To Amend Chapter Two, Article Two, Section Two Dash Two Dash Three A Of Flavanna County Code To Designate The Beaver Dam Baptist Church As Polling Place For The Palmyra District, One O One Voting Precinct. Mr. Doll.
No.
Oh, Ms. Ayers.
Harris.
It said two different things. Your agenda said, Mr. Doll. Good evening. I am Kelly Harris, Assistant County Administrator, and I am very happy to be here tonight because we did get the big bright check in the win category for redistricting. And I don't ever want to hear that again for ten years. Um, as you will remember, a couple of weeks ago, I came to you asking to advertise a public hearing for designating a polling place. And here we are, um, very quickly, uh, the redistricting ordinance was adopted on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. We did receive our, um, certification of no objection, uh, last Friday, I think it was. We need to do this because the Palmyra precinct polling place is no longer located in the Palmyra District. It's now in the Columbia District. Various requirements for the polling places, we've been through those before. We've met everything that we need to do. Our next slide look like. We, um, contacted representatives from two locations that seemed reasonable. Both had, um, ADA, um, access, uh, both were climate controlled and everything that they needed to be. The board determined that the Beaver Dam Baptist Church was probably the better of the two options and that is what we advertised. Next, please. We receive, you gave authorization to hold a public hearing on February second. We advertised on the tenth and the seventeenth. And here we are tonight to, um, asking you to consider an ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Article Two, Section Two Dash Two Dash Three A Of The Flavanna County Code To Designate The Beaver Dam Baptist Church As The Polling Place For The Palmyra District, One O One Voting Precinct. Are there any questions?
And also we've got Mr. Tom Payne, a representative of Beaver Dam Baptist Church, and he was nice enough to bring this back to, um, a special committee there. And, and like I said, they gave their, they gave their thumbs up to move forward. So.
Thank you. Anybody have a question for Mr. Payne? All righty. Thank you very much. Um, are there any other questions for? Any discussion? All right.
Over that.
Yeah. Now, Mr. Payne, did you want to say anything?
We already voted for it, right?
No, no. We voted to advertise it. All right. All right. If there are no other questions for the board and hearing none, yeah, we will now open the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? See, no one here. Ms. Harris, anybody online? One. If there's no one, I'm going to count to three. I will now close the public hearing. Is there a motion from the board?
I move the board to supervise as a clear resolution and ordinance to amend Chapter Two, Article Two, Section Two Dash Two Dash Three, Prentice A Of The Flavanna County Code Of Design, To Designate The Beaver Dam Baptist Church As The Polling Place For The Palmyra District, One O One Voting Precinct.
Second.
Motion's made by Ms. Booker and seconded by Ms. Seagull. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. All righty. I will now open the second round of public comment. Anyone wish to address the board? Please keep your, please state your name, address, keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? Ms. Harris? Seeing none, I will now close second round of public comment. Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Chair, I move the Flavanna County Board of Supervisors to a closed meeting pursuant to the provisions of Section Two Dot Two Dash Thirty Seven Eleven A Three Of Virginia. And, sorry, and Section Two Dot Two Dash Three Seven Eleven A Seven Of The Code Of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended for the purposes of discussing real estate, potential acquisition of real estate, litigation, actual litigation in connection with the science crossroads water and so private.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Booker. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye. We are now in closed session.
All right, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I move the closed meeting to adjourn and the Flavata County Board of Supervisors convene again in open session. Be resolved, the Board of Supervisors does hereby certify to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Section 202-3711A of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, second by Ms. Booker, Ms. Egan.
Aye.
Ms. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien.
Aye.
Mr. Fairchild. Chair votes aye, we are now back in open session. I will now open the budget work session. We are going to begin with the county department budget proposals and CIP, Mr. Dahl.
Yep, so one, we just have one, one department that wants to kind of just kind of go over their budget a little bit, and then what I figured we would go into CIP a little bit, and then I've got a little brief, we've got some information on health insurance, and we can go kind of wherever the board wants to go from there. Unfortunately, we don't have any updated figures from the commissioner at this point, so, so we don't have any additional new revenues right now. We've got some, we've got some technical issues with our, our software going on, so he wasn't able to get us any information, but hopefully by next week we can get something situated. So, so the first thing is we got Flavata County Public Works, we'll have Mr. Hickman come up, and he wanted to go over a few things on his budget.
Chairman, I assume that you're not going to need me for this.
No, sir.
And by the way, don't count on getting anything out of the commission tomorrow, because he's going bird hunting with me.
No, no, not you, I was talking about the commissioner.
I heard you, but I'm telling you, there's more than one of us.
Good luck tomorrow.
Have fun, I know you will. All right, Mr. Hickman.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening.
And Calvin, just let me know when you want to go, go to next slide.
Yeah, let's go to the next slide.
Yep.
The Public Works Department is bifurcated, we have the public work side, and we have the public utility side. We have 24 employees, we service over 1,000 tickets requests in a year. Our budget exceeds $4 million accumulated. Our staff maintains, cleans, and repairs 42 county vehicles, 47, 42 county buildings, 47 county vehicles, and 86 pieces of heavy and light equipment. I've asked for two new positions. One was a fleet apprentice. The other one was a carpenter, I can go into detail on each of those and the reasons why I want to get those. But they weren't funded, but I do think they're required for the tasks that we have at Public Works. Next slide. COLA, cost of living adjustment, CPI, Consumer Price Index, the two are tied together. The county budget, proposed budget proposes a 5% COLA. Consumer Price Index over the last 12 months is 7.5%. Food has gone up 7.4%, energy 40%, vehicles 12%. It's the largest increase in the last 40 years. Next slide. Qualified applicants are not applying for the positions that we need to solve the task at hand. HVAC technician, utility three, building services worker. County wages are not meeting today's industry environment, therefore not attracting qualified candidates. The county salary study needs to be utilized as a tool to solve this dilemma. Any questions?
Oh, that's it? Oh, sorry, if you would expand upon the necessity of those two positions.
The fleet apprentice would work, his supervisor would be Mr. Tanner, who is our fleet mechanic. He, as you can see how many vehicles that we have to service, and all the equipment that he services there in the shop. Two hands are not enough sometimes, four hands. Presently, we pull somebody from the Building and Grounds Division to come help him if he needs another hand, so that leaves them light. Also, when we have to go pick up a vehicle, yours got to have two people, you got to take somebody there to pick up the vehicle. So it takes two people to do that, takes two people to go get something inspected. It takes time for Mr. Tanner to stop what he's doing and go get the parts for what he's doing. So he's not efficient as himself anymore, and just doing the work that he's accomplished. We, he needs somebody else assisting him. We also need somebody else with that skill that he has, but he's just not servicing all of the vehicles that need to be serviced, all the equipment that needs to be serviced. He'll travel out to the convenience center and service the backup, you know, he could be gone half the day there, and leave stuff in the shop. So to be more efficient, I think this position needs.
And it is, and isn't it kind of dangerous for him to be, and he's in the shop by himself a lot?
He can be in the shop.
If there's an accident or something, and I know Mr. Tanner's a good, does a good job.
Yes, he does, we're very fortunate to have him. Yeah, Mr. Tanner's got a lot of great skills besides just being a good mechanic, he's, he's an excellent welder too, and.
Welder, yeah.
And, and so again, you know, as I said, I didn't fund both of these positions in my, in my, in my proposed budget, and I can tell you partially on, one, we've got other positions that are, that are open and outstanding first. Two, on the fleet apprentice, a little bit, it's kind of a little bit of a catch 22, because within, within the last fiscal year and this fiscal year, Public Works has, has received, you know, as, as all county departments and agencies, good funding for fleet replacement. So hopefully there will be less vehicles to have to fix once we have newer stock in place. Now, it doesn't still negate the fact what Mr. Hickman was saying that, you know, it's probably not the safest at times if someone's working solo like that. So, you know, it's just one of those things, you know, we have so many, so many needs and just trying to fit them in with, with the budget, and, and you know, that, that just, just happens to be one of them. But also, it also sounds like some of the rationale is that they will still not always be together, because as you said, if somebody's working on a backup at the landfill or something, somebody else is here doing prevent and maintenance or working on something in the shop. And, and the carpenter one, you know, currently, you know, the board made a good decision, I want to say, two, two and a half years ago, we made the HVAC technician, we made that a county staff position, because we were paying a good bit to a contract prior, prior to that. And, and, and the person we had on, you know, he did, he did great work, but, but you know, he went on to different things, and so now we're, we're left trying to hire for that position again, like many other positions we are. So, you know, going back to the carpenter, you know, for plumbing, HVAC, and then sort of plumbing, electrical, carpentry, you know, we try to utilize contract work for that, because it's maybe not something necessarily, that's maybe an everyday thing, but you know, Mr. Hickman may have a different, a different view on that. Carpenter's position, we have a lot of carpentry work that needs to be accomplished. We have a lot of buildings, a lot of old buildings that constantly need skilled level people to work on them, just that can do what, the tasks that we need. Today, there's not that, as many people that are carpenters, who just didn't go into the carpentry field. Trades are a little bit low, a little bit anemic out there today. You know, there's two ways we solve our tasks, one is in-house, and one is outsourced. And so we try to get our skill level up as high as we can and do it in-house. If we can't, it gets outsourced, and we have to go to contracts. Today, people are not bidding on carpentry work like they used to, they've just got too much work out there. There's just not as many crews out there working. And so they're not coming to bid on my work that we want, which is not here, and it's not going to get any better. You know, people are not going into the trades, there's not going to be as many people going into the future and doing that kind of work. I think we should get ahead of that, and get higher that position in-house, and stay ahead of it, and get the work done that we need to get done. Right now, I just, I'm not getting the work done.
And if you had to pick, you know, I know that's a difficult thing to ask, but if you had to pick your work, you know, trying to balance the cents and trying to come to, to a number, is there one that you would pick over the other?
Between the two, the carpenter or the fleet mate assistant? Both in, they're both a need today for us. Definitely your fleet assistant.
What kind of, I'm sorry. What kind of money we're talking about? What is? What kind of money we're talking about? What is brave down seven?
Um, let me see here. Ms. Snow, I know she, she had a good analysis. Let me think here. Wait here, let me go back to, let me go back to the actual budget itself here.
I, I've got that piece of paper.
Oh, you got, well, no, I have your email. I was just going to go into the actual. Um, so the total with, you know, salary, insurance, benefits, everything like that was forty-eight thousand, three, one, six.
And carpenter was seventy-two.
Correct.
And that's with all the benefits.
And, and that's what Mr. Hickman provided. I, I know Ms. Snow did a little more analysis on the positions.
Mr. Hickman, did you answer? Did you answer, Mr. O'Brien, as to which one you would prefer over the other if you had only one position?
I did. I was going to err on the side of safety and I would say the fleet apprentice.
Okay.
Is a necessity.
And, and how much do we spend on outsourcing carpentry jobs right now? I know you said that.
They won't bid on it.
No, they won't, they won't bid, but you must have some expense.
You know, we have a, we have a big project at Pleasant Grove right now, all the exterior work.
All the rails, handrails.
The stairs, the shutters. On the house. You know, we have work on the old registrar's building. We just don't want to pick it up.
Yeah, a- a- again, for me, you know, we're in kind of a, we're in kind of a different, a different era right now. Where, where people are just not bidding on as much. And, and so that's where I don't want to necessarily, from the HVAC position, when, when we converted that, that was, that was a good need. And there was a, there was a good solid story for us to save a lot of money and we did. We, we saved a good amount of money by, by doing that. And, and you know, from just a, an ongoing comfort standpoint, working in buildings from heating and air AC, that was an absolute win for the county to, to do that one. You know, the carpentry one, and like I said, I understand what Mr. Hickman's saying about people not bidding. Again, you know, are, are we going to get, are we going to get the person hired? And, and is this just an anomaly right now because of the current market we're in? So that's, that's a little bit of my, my hesitation with that one. And, you know, I understand his point on the fleet apprentice too. So that, like I said, I'm glad he, I'm glad he.
And then car, I mean, so, and there would be another argument for why you would go with fleet apprentice is because they have, as I said, you know, a little bit of an anomaly due to the marketplace and construction industry booming right now. Doesn't solve the problem, but it, you know, makes a point that you do want to train somebody who's alongside for safety purposes. And that you also, you know, may be able to change that position down the road. You know, sometimes you get, oftentimes a handyman is also pretty good at multiple things and may have some cross balance. But I guess my question was, a carpenter for seventy-three thousand dollars, where does that come, number come from?
So that's not the salary, the actual salary pieces.
Well, I figured sixty thousand.
Fifty, fifty, well, I think it was right around fifty some thousand.
I was going to say fifty-four, fifty-five.
Uh, fifty-one, seven, fifty is what it looks like. Fifty-one, seven, fifty. I mean, so again, right around, you know, fifty thousand is, is the salary. And then again, coming up to the seventy-two, workers comp, FICA, VRS, group life, those are straight percent, straight percentages based upon the salary. And then we always budget ten grands for health insurance because we don't know if someone's going to take a employee only plan or a family plan. So we kind of pick right from that as, as a placeholder. So tho- those are, those are the dollar amounts associated with those. And, and again, you know, it's the one, you know, the departments, if, if they had any, you know, any, any requests that I didn't fund in my, in my budget to, to be able to express those to the board. And like I said, I think Mr. Hickman was the only one of, of county staff that, that wanted to do that. And, and again, we don't have any, any new revenues to, to go over at this point. So I'm not sure if you want to start balancing the budget tonight, you know, hopefully I would hope by next week, maybe we can get some from, from Mr. Sheridan.
You'll get some, you won't get the final numbers.
No, we're not going to get.
To where we have to be because it's just.
Yeah, I don't personally think we need to spend a lot of time figuring out what we don't know.
Yeah.
When you're talking about a person working, apprentice working with Mr. Tanner, look how much that person will learn from Mr. Tanner. If Mr. Tanner's out, if we, Mr. Tanner, then you have someone else that's there that kind of know the procedure and know. Anytime one person work by themselves, you're, you're at a definite disadvantage. Because when you leave, everything else leaves.
But then we'd be in the same situation with the one carpenter. Yeah, we'd be in the same situation with the carpenter or the HVAC technician.
Yeah, although, although it's maybe arguable that, you know, you can go out to the marketplace and hire an HVAC technician. And he works on HVAC systems and knows those. Whereas a mechanic who's working on all the equipment gets a real thorough knowledge of that equipment.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's a difference. I see what you're saying, but I do think.
More benefit there.
Well, and thank you for the numbers and the things of that nature. And I got to tell you, Mr. Hickman, I agree with you. But we're kind of at a point where we're trying to catch up all the way around. Can't disagree with anything you said.
When, when we get the file numbers, we'll, we'll have a board discussion with.
And then that's when we have to make the hard decisions of where we put it. But appreciate your honesty about the fleet apprentice and we'll have to see because we already know where, if, if, if we, if we do the school budget, fix what we know has been wrong for fourteen years, twelve years, or however long it is. We know that's one point eight million dollar, oh, we got to start off in. And, and, but thank you for y'all's hard work and it is appreciated. Please don't think that it's not.
And I, I think, and I could be wrong, you can correct me if you will, but it seems to me that we've turned down budget requests that Mr. Hickman has argued for at least a couple of times at this point.
So, so like I said, the next thing we wanted to go through is just CIP a little bit to see if the board had any questions for what, what was being proposed in my proposed CIP. And I'll kind of go through everything. And like I said, we can look at the project specifically and just kind of go from there. Let me just do one thing. Let me hide some stuff here. So for Parks and Rec, so one, the request in this just we are, and from Mr. Fairchild's standpoint, if there's a cell that's got this, I don't know, call it pinkish, whatever color, that means that there was some change there. So, so Mr. Spitzer did request a spray, Pleasant Grove Sprayground Park for Pleasant Grove Park. He requested that, but I did not fund that in my budget. So that's why you see it here in the same color there. I moved the dollar amount out to the out, out fiscal year. Mr. Spitzer also requested soccer fencing for Pleasant Grove Park. He's been requesting this for, for many, many years now. I did include that in my budget this year for funding. Also going down as we go into Public Works, again, we talked about there's a capital reserve maintenance fund that kind of gets funded every year. Some other requests from Public Works were Public Works major equipment. Mr. Hickman did request six hundred and twenty thousand for, for equipment. And I can go in and look specifically at that if the board wants. I didn't fund all of the, all of the items in, in that request this year. Again, and just remember too, the board did fund, I think, three hundred thousand dollars worth of major equipment in the current fiscal year we're in right now, that, that we're going to be working to get, get a lot of these projects done with the debt proceeds that were taken out.
So none of that is debt proceeds. That's above and beyond the three hundred thousand.
Well, all this stuff, yeah, yeah, that's above and beyond what the board has, has approved currently right now.
And so what is that equipment?
Yeah, I'll take a quick look here. So again, what, what I ended up funding, let me just go back real quick. I just like to look at the dollar amount, one, two, fifteen. So I did not fund, I ended up funding, it, it's, it's an extender backhoe for public utilities, a dump truck for utilities, and then a heavy, heavy trailer for public utilities.
All right, no.
And then a tractor. And, and I didn't fund one dump truck and then another standard backhoe.
Well, that other dump truck could be taken care of with what we talked about with transforming brush twenty.
Potentially.
Potentially into another dump truck, to be a backup dump truck for the one that we're buying.
Once, once we get that vehicle in-house and, and Public Works has a chance to, to take a look at it, to see what it could be utilized for. Again, there may be a, a short-term offset for, for something that's on, on their list. But tho- those were, again, I didn't fund the one twenty-five or the, or the ninety thousand. But the other items I did. Does the board have any questions on, on that one?
There's one thing that with any of the, I forget, any of that money that's for infrastructure is dedicated. Because some of it's dedicated for infrastructure of things of that nature.
Infrastructure is meant for water.
Well, I mean, that's why we're getting this.
Yeah, the, the hundred and seventy thousand dollar, dollar.
The extender hoe, the dump truck and the trailer, we're getting that for infrastructure.
No, but, but they want you to install infrastructure.
Oh, not repair and maintain.
Yes.
We've waited four years with them building for us.
So, so that's on that. Um, under another, another project that was requested courthouse HVAC and lighting controls. And also too, if the board has questions, again, Mr. Hickman's here, he can certainly answer some of these more specifically. Again, two hundred and eighty-five thousand was requested for the courthouse HVAC and lighting controls. Again, all the projects that were more HVAC related, I funded it in, in my budget.
Does this go back to the cycle that we talked about last year where everything was aging out and we needed to replace the HVAC? And no need to walk to the back, Mr. Hickman. We're going to talk about this stuff. Keep on, just, just stay close.
And, and I would add to that question, was this not part of the, the train contract that we did?
No.
No.
Energy assessment or energy production?
This was where they came and talked to us about the aging.
This, no, this is a new courthouse.
Yeah. All right, Mr. Hickman, am I correct in thinking that this is going back to where y'all came to us and presented how the stuff was aging and we needed to
Yes.
Replace.
That is correct. The, the software package, the controls in the new courthouse.
So this is not the system itself, this is the controls for the system.
This is just the fundamental control.
How old is the courthouse, the new courthouse?
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Yeah, oh.
Like I said, it's like a cellphone.
What's that, sixteen years old? Yeah.
Good thing we're not going by that.
So, so that's what that project is. Again, I funded this project in my request. Another one, there, there was some additional funding requested for the Carriage Brook Equipment Storage Shed. Eighty thousand this year and, and requested twenty thousand next year. I did not fund the additional eighty thousand this year. Again, there's some funding in the current budget for the storage shed. And, and, and what I believe Mr. Hickman said is, is the price on that has changed. So, so that's, that's the, that's the request for that. The next item is library heating cooling system replacement for a hundred and forty-five thousand. Again, that one I did fund in my budget. And again, is this similar to the courthouse?
Yeah, it's the very same issue. It's a software problem. It's the it's the, it's not the hardware, it's software.
It's not the system itself, it's the controls.
So the vendor is, the vendor who did the original is no longer providing software updates or?
That would probably only last one year with them.
Yeah, that's a problem with a lot of electronic.
Those dang old HVAC guys.
That's that item. Um, energy recovery unit for the public safety building. Again, this is another kind of HVAC related item for the public safety building. That's a two hundred thousand dollar.
Same type deal?
Yeah, I can't go into too much detail on that one.
Okay.
But it's just, it's in same genre.
Same genre, okay.
That, 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 that one's more of the hardware though, the, the actual mechanical equipment, yes.
When we get out, where's Public Works going when we start our building process?
We had talked about it going down, well, here.
Oh.
Down to Carriage Brook. I mean, we got the maintenance building behind here. And, you know, there's been discussions about building the, the equipment storage shed and, and having this more of some shared uses between maybe Public Works, maybe Parks and Rec.
Arts council?
Well, the Arts Council's already.
In here.
Yeah.
But it'd be three of them.
Well, yeah, I mean, the Arts Council is not necessarily an everyday department in the building, but I mean, they would have potential. We'd have to see, we'd have to see what, how, how that all.
We're not there yet.
Yeah. Um, so, so that's that item. And then, um, again, social services is request, has requested one vehicle every year that was included, that was included in my budget.
Write that under Public Works and not under Social Services.
You know, it really is, but since social services is kind of a, a state-supported entity, we, we always separate it out. And I don't really have a good, I don't really have a good reason. I think they just want to make sure that since it's for social services, that it's separately identified and, and funded. And rather than being in the mix of, of, of all other county.
It's in the wrong place, Barrett.
What's that?
It's in the wrong place.
And then the last one, what's?
Well, it's just under vehicles, so yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's just because it's a vehicle.
All right.
And then the last one down there.
And then, then, then paving, I didn't fund paving for county buildings. Again, I think that's something, it's, it's definitely needed, but I think once we do more of a kind of a plan for building new buildings and if there's going to be construction happening, maybe.
You don't want to do that before the construction and then have to do it again right after the construction.
Correct. Now, there's some areas we're not doing construction that maybe, but, but again, I think doing one overarching big contract maybe between the county and the schools at some point for economies of scale would be a better thing to do.
So, mister, why would, tell us about the paving for its safety? Did you, that's part of your request?
The paving?
Yes.
Yes.
Where is it? And it says for safety reasons. Where, where, where are those areas located?
You know, I don't know about safety, other than potholes out there, but other than the cracks in, you know, for people to walk around on. Certainly that's always an issue. The, but most of us just wearing out.
Yeah.
And just needs to be recoded or, or replaced. Did do a thorough, we went to all the buildings and that needed it.
There it's the father of Savannah County, Bill Park and that, Clark Union, Savannah. Okay, wow, that's a lot of places.
So, so that's that. And then the last one, there's more additional county vehicles that requested um, some additional funding for three seventy-five. I did not fund the full three seventy-five. Um, I, I, I decreased the funding by a hundred thousand. Um, and so that's basically, you know, county, county trucks and, and, and other county vehicles as well.
Put that little chart you had up there again, especially previous validation, okay?
We've really been pushing that out year after year after year.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, the last couple of years, I mean, again, in the current fiscal year, there is. In the current budget, there is, oh goodness, I would say there was like three hundred thousand funded for county vehicles also in the current budget.
Would that have been on that little yellow thing?
Well, I think at one point in time, sometimes if it was under fifty thousand. There's that to county administrator's discretion to go ahead and purchase. Is vehicle?
No.
Never?
Never. Never, all all vehicles have always been in 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 the CIP budget.
Okay.
Yeah, no.
So, you're getting a Tesla?
No. No, I'm not.
I'm gonna have a fleet of Teslas to drive her behind the wheel. Wake me up when we're done.
So again, there there's ve- there's county vehicles in this budget and then again, there's some more in this next budget. And again, once we kind of start getting caught up and and kind of going back to some discussions before. We don't want to completely turn over the whole fleet of of buses or county vehicles or sheriff's vehicles in one year. Because again, you need to be on a good replacement cycle.
And we have to be careful of how many we grow and grow and grow. Because then just means more and more, we gotta replace each year.
Yep.
Makes that big number bigger each year.
Yep, so so that was it for uh Public Works, um, under the sheriffs, uh, thank you, Mr. Hickman.
Thank you, Mr. Hickman.
Uh, under the sheriff's vehicles, Sheriff Hess requested three hundred and eight thousand one sixty for his vehicles um for replacement. I think that uh basically equates to.
Six?
Five or six, oh no, wait, I'm saying.
Probably five.
Sheriff has somebody, is that about five or six vehicles? And that's some of the problem, we, your board was 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 good to take our, we took, fund a lot of vehicles. But we're, now we're kind of waiting for equipment to come in, to be able to order the vehicles and. And and so that's kind of another reason for maybe not going full on and and funding everything.
Do you get a better price the more vehicles you order at one time?
Not necessarily, not, not in today's environment.
Are you able to join other contracts with?
Yeah. Virginia Sheriff.
And no, no, I was gonna get you to come up to the microphone, sir, you're wearing a gun, I'm not gonna order you.
You, um, you said the Virginia Sheriff Institute.
They have procurement, they have a procurement program.
Yeah, they always ask us to join that, I get something from them, because I asked you one time, did you get any money from them?
They provide scholarships for students here in the county, they're they're advertising it now. Uh, they also are lobbyists, they also provide training and education for sheriffs and sheriff's deputies throughout.
So that's really your picture in there.
And then we also, yes, a younger picture. But they also uh piggyback uh with North Carolina and several other states and procure procure uh vehicles. And I I don't know if y'all know, also, the heavy equipment can be purchased through that and it's usually cheaper, almost always cheaper than the state contract. Okay. Heavy equipment.
Yeah.
Backhoes, tractors, tires, you you know, all, they pretty much sell everything.
Yes.
And what they do is they do such large numbers that they're able to.
I'll make sure Ms. Toll reaches out to you if she doesn't know that already.
Join them, they give you a box of stickers.
But but it's, it's getting, getting the product is is the problem. So we went up to, we're fortunate, the build shop, it builds our vehicles as we have now have one located in Savannah County. And we were up there last week and there are cars from uh out of state, their cars. Right, yeah, and they'd love to, if they could get more staffing, they would probably add on.
Right.
Uh, but getting, you know, getting, getting people to work, uh, but they had one vehicle, they said sat there for five months. Because the the parts never would show up. Yeah, so anyway, Sheriff Hess's requests, I I funded all those in my budget. Um, going under fire and rescue apparatus, there were five pieces requested, uh tanker twenty-fourth union. Ambulance forty-nine for Palmyra, which we kind of push off previously. Lake Monticello ambulance five-five-three, response five for Lake Monticello and then car thirty for Kent Store. And I funded all those items in my, in my budget.
So, between the loan that we took and those items, what's the total amount that we've spent on? That we're spending on?
Fire rescue apparatus.
Rescue operation.
Oh, so we, so so in the current fiscal year, you you three point five million and then. That's one, about one point five, so about five, five million dollars in in two years. With about one point seven million of that being the the latter truck.
Right, right.
Um, so that's it for the fire rescue apparatus, under schools items. So one, they had their capital reserve fund, um, also technology, they requested a server replacement. For one, I I need to follow up with the schools because apparently the cost of that came in higher than what was anticipated as well, so.
And 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 the schools, I mean, I think we, I mean, I'm I'm not clear whether we did it for things like overall servers. But we've provided a line item number for technology for them and that that number's pretty significant now. It's like quarter million dollars a year or something like that.
Well, for, no, for te- technology, generally what we've done is is if they have one infinite project, like uh one year. The board funded a server, like a big server replacement, this is not a server repla- placement, this is a wireless network replacement. So we funded a server replacement um where their server is without saying where the server is previously. Um, and it was like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, you know, one, you know, kind of concise project. We don't just generally have a a rotating technology fund for the schools where they can.
No, no, but it seems to me that a number of years back, you know, the argument was made that it should be in the budget and not in the CIP. And so we allocated money to the schools in the budget for technology, not in the CIP. And I can't remember, but I I think that number was pretty significant. And 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 a couple of years back, Mr. Nichols went and kind of presented how, quote, allocate money in relationship to. Because we don't have control over the buckets, but we allocated that money for those specific purposes. And I think he did a presentation in terms of saying, here's how that money was actually spent in relationship to what we were told. And so I I just feel like we don't want to let that slip, I mean, it and I'm not saying it's a quarter million, I don't know what it is. But if they were allocated a line item budget in the two thousand and, you know, fifteen budget. And that's now part of the line item, and so let's say it's, you know, quarter million dollars. That's a significant amount that's dedicated to. Whether they spend that whole money that year or whether they then allocate that to their own CIP MRR, if you would, for technology. You know, that's something that we should be.
I'll I'll have to check with Dr. Gretz, I don't, I I don't a hundred percent recall that, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean it it.
And it's, it shouldn't have any bearing on what they need here.
No, 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 but it, but what I'm saying is, if if I'm operating a business and my, and when I set aside in my regular line item budget, not a capital expense. But every year I'm gonna expend this money on technology, right? If I spend that money on technology, then in essence, I'm not gonna have any quote-unquote major upgrade. And they may be spending that money on technology and may be entirely justified to do this. I'm just asking for verification that whatever line item we've given them, they're actually spending on technology. That is now not reallocated somewhere else and now we're spending money on technology again when we put that in as a line item.
I I remember that, I I think where they took it out of the CIP.
So that was on the planning commission at that time, there was a big discussion about.
Yeah.
Whether or not, you know, technology should be a CIP line item or not, or just a regular budget line item and.
Yeah, I remember that too.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I I remember a little bit that that one, you know, from a, from a technology standpoint, especially when you get into.
Oh, well, they replace, you know, I mean, I think, I don't think they've come to us and asked us for, say, replacements of Chromebooks.
They've been spending millions of dollars on Chromebook.
Right, no, I know they have, and I, and so I know that they're spending that money, I just don't know the totality of how that money is spent, whether they're spending. You know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars year one and then they're not doing anything for year two and three and then they spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year four. I just don't know the answer to that.
I I I can follow up with uh Mr. Stribling and you can follow up with with the technology folks and just see kind of. Get a better idea of of from that and I can go back and look at some previous budgets to see, see kind of. See if I can kind of run, run, run that trail.
Be at least, at least five years ago. Because I haven't been on the planning commission.
So is it, is this in our budget? Did you say?
This, I I did not fund that in my budget, I did not fund that in my budget. Um, school safety vestibules, they were originally requested a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, this is one, they actually got a sixty thousand of school safety grant, so that they reduced their uh request to ninety thousand. Um, and I don't remember what's, what's, what schools this is at, but I think the full amount was to get all their schools getting uh. Safety vestibules in in the front of all their schools.
Yeah, I think I know, but it's me to find safety vestibules.
Yeah, like when you walk, you know, when you walk in the building, you you just can't go into the, into the school itself, there's there's more of a. A a glass partition that you have to go through the front office and they've got a.
Yeah, they had to, like central, they blocked off a space where the people up here can see me.
Yeah.
When I come through there, they won't let me in.
Yeah.
Until I push that button or whatever, so that's what they're doing with all.
And that's what they want to do with all the schools, have a school, a safety vestibule in in the front of all the schools.
We don't have one in the front door each school. Maybe.
I think it was a remodeling, was it?
I don't think so.
I mean, I know we got a second door, we gotta go through it to middle school.
Middle school you do, the high school you do.
I bet you Carriage Brook and Central. Central does.
It says, we recently completed Savannah Middle School and Central Safety Vestibules, a safety grant.
West Central.
This is for Carriage Brook Elementary, West Central and Abrams.
Gotcha, that's it, that's, that's the three I wasn't sure about, that's the three or four.
Um, so so I funded that, um, again, paving and resurfacing, just like the county, I I did fund that. Because again, if we're gonna do it, let's get one big contract.
Yeah, instead of having people come here and there and everywhere, let's go ahead and do it together.
Uh, they requested a hundred and fifty thousand for Savannah Middle School Athletic Field Lights. That was funded in my request and 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 I know.
Is that done in conjunction with the Pleasant Grove?
It's not, it's it's.
Alright, and I've talked about the lights a lot, but I've also talked and I think that this is one of those things where we can meet with. Uh, Coach Carter and Ms. Doug Linsky and uh Dr. Gretz or Mr. Stribling, who are, Dr. Stribling, whoever it is. Um, because I think that's the place that our, the lighting. You go over there and cut the lights on to middle school right now, you're really going, okay, no two twenty, no two twenty. And I remember back when I was a young coach and we would walk over there going, alright. Because we had one of our coaches got hit one night and that was by foot. Good thing a man didn't have a whole lot of hair to begin with.
Can always joke on the ball, guys.
I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Fairchild, I just, I couldn't help it, you remember Coach Stump?
Hashtag bald lives better.
But uh, yeah, I bet you, I know the football field needs to be changed.
Yeah.
If if we're gonna use that in the future for anything at night.
Um, the next item was middle school annex floor and bleachers, they requested a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I did not fund that in this year.
Where is this at?
Middle school.
The old Abrams.
The Abrams.
The Abrams Gym.
School buses, they requested five hundred and fifty thousand, I did not fund the full five hundred and fifty thousand, I cut out two buses. I think within the last two fiscal years, they probably have. I want to say probably at least fifteen buses, if not more.
And does that count the nine or ten that we're?
There's, there's money in the debt proceeds right now to fund ten buses.
So that does not count, that's, we replaced fifteen.
I, no, no.
Now another nine, ten, plus now another five.
I apologize, I think that fifteen includes the ten and and maybe even more, I I I don't know for certain.
It's it's at least six last year, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, it could be six, yeah, sixteen.
I mean, uh, trust me, we're putting miles on our buses right now because having to drive double runs and things of that nature. Uh, there's a lot of problems we gotta fix with that.
Yeah.
Because just get on the bus radio, just come by one time and just listen to the bus radio in the morning. Or listen to the bus announcements in the afternoon, so all you gotta listen to is that, 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 that's, that has more to do with staffing than it has to do with. Staffing, but what happens is you require buses to run instead of a thirty-mile route, you're now running a forty-mile route or forty-five.
But.
Because the members of staffing, yeah, lack of.
You're putting more miles on one bus but using less buses.
Correct, but that's putting a lot of miles on our newer buses.
Yeah.
And I, and I understand that, but I think that, you know, it's, it's a cycle replacement.
Oh, I I agree, I don't want to be sitting here and us having to replace thirteen or fourteen buses in one year.
Right.
And that's what we're looking at, if we, if we put three thirty there and we buy ten buses with the. Debt proceeds, we're looking at thirteen buses in twenty years, we gotta replace.
Right, but do we replace them according to the mileage?
No, years.
Years.
Years of service, unless they break down and die.
I I I mean, I I, no, I personally, I think that we could use that money in other parts of the CIP. I mean, I just think that from a life cycle management perspective, that's a big number. And if we're, if we're replacing it by years, you know, and I think the 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 life uh that we allocate to buses has been fifteen years, is that correct?
I would say they, I would say they, they use a conservative approach of twenty years.
Twenty years.
If I, if I remember.
It's twenty, because I've talked about getting the total number of buses that we need and just about about twenty.
Right.
Okay, that's how many we get each year.
Right, and we have what? Eighty buses.
I think we got, I I can't tell you the number of routes because right now, it's not an efficient number. Because there's so many doubling up on one bus, but uh. And that's, that's the one thing I would love to do is get to where we're four buses a year.
Right.
And it's that, that provides us with eighty buses over a twenty-year cycle, it's just a continuous cycle. We know four hundred thousand dollars a year, four hundred, five hundred thousand, whatever it costs, is going to.
I think in, in first year COVID hits, a twenty-twenty budget cycle, we didn't fund anything for the CIP.
Correct.
And twenty-twenty-one, we did the six buses, but I think in twenty-nineteen, we did at least five buses.
But we came back at the end of the year with money that was left over, I think, and bought three or four buses. Only, I don't think we ever bought less than three.
And and they also ended up purchasing some buses out of their operational funds.
I think they purchased used buses or something.
Do we have a, and I know that years ago that, you know, the concern was that the average. Life of our buses was in the twenty-seven year range, not the twenty-year range. And so for this replacement cycle, I was.
That's why the replacement cycle got so screwed up, because I would get on a bus that I actually rode.
Yeah.
And.
When you were a kid.
Yeah, when I was, when I was a kid, I know Mr. Fairchild rode some of them. We used to use the old athletic buses, thirty A and thirty-eight A, thirty-one A, Coach Carter and I were driving them.
Can we read which?
Fifteen years ago, alright.
What you put up, is that Karen?
It was current as of November when they submitted.
Okay, look at what they're saying and see, you know, you don't, might you know more, but see what they're saying about.
Twenty, twenty years is what they've always said.
They have, we currently have ten buses, two daily use from nineteen ninety-six, nineteen. Nineteen ninety-seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven, that means those ten buses are twenty-six, twenty-seven years old.
Yep.
One daily use nineteen ninety-two and that's sixteen buses. That are seventeen, nineteen years, how many buses we talking about, it, we got old buses.
Well, but the sixteen buses right there, okay, four buses per year, you're twenty, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen. That that's those, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
And and again, I don't know if, one, this was submitted prior to the debt proceeds taken out. So if we're buying ten buses right now.
Or eliminate the old.
That might be eliminating some of these that are on the old list.
They've got two plus eight, when when they say eight buses, one daily use from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two. Twenty-five, twenty-one years, what does that mean?
Alright.
Eight buses, one daily use mean?
Alright, two of them are being used daily. So uh, that's my guess, is two are being used daily and of the eight buses, one is being used daily right now, the other fifteen. So, uh, that's my guess, is two are being used daily, and of the eight buses, one is being used daily right now, the other fifteen. Like the other day, they took my bus and I haven't gotten it back.
So, so we have, if I read this correctly, then we have essentially seventeen, I'm sorry, uh,
Fourteen.
Fourteen buses that are just sitting in backup.
No, no, they have, they have, under the ten buses, it has two daily use, under the eight buses, one daily use, so that's three buses. And then under the sixteen buses, eleven daily, so that's fourteen buses.
Eighteen buses minus three is fifteen.
Right, but then there's another five here, so there's twenty right now that are not used daily.
And there's enough of twenty that are not used, but, but again, looking at the life of the buses, and if you're trying to get to the cycle management, we have four buses per year, and we're buying ten buses, and you know, that's gonna replace the oldest buses.
We're gonna put a balloon right there.
We're, well, we're gonna put a balloon, but on top of that, you, you almost have to, and I, I understand we have a shortage of bus drivers, I do. I mean, to me, it seems like we've got fifteen buses that aren't being driven, that's an awful lot of like cars sitting in your garage.
But having said, having said that, those ones that are from ninety-six to ninety-seven?
I understand that, I'm just saying, I'm questioning the, the, you know, I understand nobody wants to drive those buses, but if we, to your point, get to four buses per year, which we're really close to getting to.
Take the two old groups out of the picture, cause that's only three, three buses, take the old buses out of the picture. If we buy, they got that lot lump sum, and this is something we gotta talk to Dr. Gretz about. Cause we may be able to use that three hundred thousand somewhere more appropriately.
What I was gonna say is maybe for next week's budget work session, I'll make sure that anyone that has CIP requests. Are here so they can more specifically answer your questions.
I would, I would love to see that money go in part to the spray park, cause we've got all these kids that are coming out of COVID. I mean, I'm just saying for myself, you know, and, 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 and it draws people to Pleasant Grove, it draws families there and it brings enthusiasm towards that. You know, I mean, I think that's, that, that would be a, you know, real class, you know.
I'm sitting here to myself and I know you can't do it, but I'm going, hey, go ahead with help, three hundred thousand would knock one point one down to eight. You know what I'm saying, I don't, we're not supposed to do that, but um.
We're, yeah, we're not supposed to do that.
And then the last, the last item is they requested student transport, and actually there's more facility vehicles in there for one twenty-five, and I funded that. So, so out of the, so the full request of all CIP items, I think it was about six point four million, and I funded four point three, and that's cash funded, and, and remember, if you look at our CIP, we, we've got a, we've got a pretty healthy fund balance at, at this, at this moment.
Can I see the rationale for the student transportation?
See, that's been one of the big things that we've had, we've had a lot more. I can't remember what year it started, but I can remember us covering every special needs transport on two buses.
So it looks like they're, they're, they're requesting a box truck with a lift gate, also a, a dump bed truck, which is probably from the two truck, that's about, probably about a hundred and twenty-five thousand for two vehicles, for those types of caliber vehicles.
And I, I, I was throw one other thing that was interesting, just was brought into conversation on TJBC around the rural transportation, needs, you know, and how can we meet rural transportation? And uh, they, they were looking at a, a, a program that, and that Vermont is trying to implement, where they're gonna have electric vehicles, and they're gonna have smaller vehicles, and they're gonna use those vehicles, um, for rural transportation that are school buses, and the idea being is that maybe instead of having, uh, uh, staff that is driving the school bus in the morning, and then, you know, have to wait five or six hours and then drive it again in the afternoon, you could actually really hire to, you know, two shifts, you know, for the buses, so you could have a morning shift and an afternoon shift, and then that can also be used in term for rural transportation. Now, that would change the nature of the type of bus that you're buying, and I'm not suggesting that we do that, but I'm not, or that we do it now, but this is the kind of thing, is maybe starting to come out with both the greater adoption of electric vehicles, and then we have to consider autonomous or semi-autonomous vehicles as potentially, another thing that's coming, right? It's not here today, but it's a thing that's coming, right?
So, and, and, and we need lots of charging stations around the.
We would need lots of those as well too, but I just thought it was a very interesting approach, I just throw that out, it's like, down the road, we may see some of these things, it may change the way we do that, and certainly addressing rural transportation is, you know, a real challenge as well for a lot of communities.
And, 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 and sheriff's gonna probably, uh, I, I read something about sheriffs, there is, there is a, a department, it was probably out, out, um, out west somewhere about sheriff's vehicles and, and being electric and, and how there was a big pushback for, just them not being the right type of vehicle from the purposes from the sheriff's use. Now, maybe in a more confined city atmosphere, maybe, maybe that would work, but maybe, but from a rural locality, I'm not sure how you could do that, especially in today's day and age.
Well, and take, he has to transport somebody from here down to southwest Virginia. After they've been halfway through a shift, all of a sudden, hey, we gotta wait to charge, I don't know how long it takes to charge a vehicle, but you gotta sit somewhere at a charging station. With somebody in the backseat, I, I thought about you when I was in the hospital the other day, they brought in a, what is it, EO, ECO or? Yeah, and I was like, okay, yep, been there, done that.
Mike, they're gonna eliminate the need for your business, cause kids won't have to learn to drive anymore, now they're eliminating your bus driving job.
You know what, I'm getting old. Yeah, brother.
I have a question about electric vehicles, if you have to charge it, uh, in, in a charging station, who pays for that? And how do you pay for it? Cause I've seen.
Some, some is free, some is, some is you put a credit card in, they charge you based on, you know, the amount of electricity that you draw out.
Okay, cause there's one up on Pantops, and it looks like you just pull it and charge it.
Well, cause probably what they're doing, they're hoping you're gonna stop and go inside and buy a bunch of food and stuff, and, or, or, or get, get items.
No, no, I'm gonna be like, dude, go, you can't use a wiper if you don't buy anything, or the washer if you don't buy anything.
Right, no, but yeah, that, that's what they do at Giant, they've got those at Giant, for sort of the express purpose of, getting people to shop at the center, right? So they're subsidizing that and that.
Because you're sitting there, you might as well go into the store.
But the, the technology's also changing where they're now coming out with rapid charging, so that you can actually charge a vehicle.
Fifteen minutes or?
Less, I mean, it's even getting less than that, so it's really, you know, the technology's really changing.
So anyway, that's, that's what I had for CIP, I mean, our, our, like I said, we don't have to get too much into it, but that's, that's what I funded versus what was requested, and, and we can certainly talk more about that, and is there any takeaways for anything that the board wants me to look into more from, from this at this point, or?
My only question would be, is you, you have Dr. Gretz next time.
Look into the school buses, I mean, uh, you know.
School buses and techno.
I'll, I'll make sure Dr. Gretz and then.
Doctors, doctors, well, yes, sir, doctor.
Doctor Bunky.
He might, no, he's not, he's not, he might, I think he's out of town, so.
Doctor Bunky.
We'll have to check, but we got, Dr. Gretz can answer anything.
I remember when Dr. Bunky.
I do too.
I was in school with older sisters, I was in between two of them.
Mike, I didn't remember you.
The only other thing I was gonna go over is, is just the health insurance a little bit.
Yeah, it can't be good news.
It's not great, but it's not horrible, I guess, well, I guess it depends on what the board wants to fund.
Does that meet your expectation in your budget or really?
Um, okay, so, so, so just a, a quick thing, so, so here's what you have in, in, in the budget document. This is just kind of talking about the staff pay rate history. Again, the board funded just five percent in the current fiscal year, and in my proposed budget, I have five percent as well in, in my current budget. Um, and just kind of, just says, remember the board adopted a pay raise inclusion policy, June twentieth, twenty eighteen. So anyone eligible for a, a COLA, they have to be on board for basically at least four months, so that means, well, someone would have, would have needed, needed to have been on board uh, two days ago, um, or actually a, a day ago, March one, twenty twenty-two to be el- eligible for the twenty twenty-three COLA. Um, and as I said, in my county administrator's budget, I've got a five percent, um, COLA in there, so the cost of it is five hundred and fifty thousand, but that five hundred and fifty thousand is offset by a hundred and fifty-four thousand, for compensation board and state and federal revenue for social services, so, so the net effect of that five hundred and fifty thousand is a four hundred thousand dollar, uh, net increase, um, for that five percent for all county staff. Um, and then anything, basically, as you can see, one percent equates to a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Um, so, so looking at health insurance, so again, eighty-four thousand was in my budget, um, for fiscal year twenty-three. So, so we got rates back from Anthem and, and premiums are increasing nine percent for the current fiscal year. And so this just shows kind of the, the premium, uh, premium increases over time. So, so I actually have six options, and then these are still a, a little bit of a work in progress, but again, the, the, the top three are kind of the, the, the no brainers. One, option one is the county pays the same amount that, that you're currently paying, basically, which means, the employee has to pick up the, uh, the, the employee picks up the increase, so that would mean what I have in my budget, the budget would decrease by thirty-five thousand. Option two is the employee pays the same amount as now, basically that means the county's picking up the full increase. So overall, that's a hundred and sixty-two thousand, so that would be mean an additional seventy-eight thousand increase needed in, in the current budget that's there. Option three is, um, county pays the same percentage that we paid previously for all the different plans. Uh, that's a hundred and sixteen thousand increase, uh, again, over what I already have in my budget, that would be a thirty-two thousand dollar, increase, and then there's, there's three other options. One is, um, revising, uh, re- revising some of the percentages for, for the family, dual, and then single. Which is a hundred and six thousand incre- uh, overall increase, or a twenty-two thousand increase above my budget. Um, option five is fitting a plan that backs into the eighty-four thousand dollars that I have in my budget right now. So again, there's, there's no change and no increase. Um, well, it's an eighty-four thousand increase, but there's no change in the current budget as it stands. Then option six is, um, eliminating the, the two fifty plan, and adding a, a one thousand dollar deductible plan. And again, you know, a lot of localities don't offer the two fifty plan.
A lot of businesses don't offer the two fifty plan, I mean.
So I don't believe schools do.
No, that, that, they don't, the schools offer five hundred, one thousand, and HDH food. And so, and so for that plan, now for that, again, this could be adjusted a little bit if, if I did this. So I've got all the different plans showing what the effect is to the employees on each one of these scenarios.
Yeah, and, and there's nothing keeping you from doing like a combination of option six and four as well too.
Correct, yeah, I mean, th- this is, like I said, these are just, just some, some initial thoughts on, on getting the nine percent. So I'm not gonna go too much into the county pays, um, a- again, just look at the big box here, this is showing, current plan versus what is proposed, this under every single plan, if, if the, if the employee has to pick up the increase, this is what happens to every single plan, this is what the monthly increases to employees.
If we do that, I'm gonna be paying the county, I won't get a paycheck.
Will be first.
So, so let me, and so Mr. Fairchild, let me, let me just kind of show you right here, so, so we have the single, single plans, and so under each single plan, currently, we have an HDHP, a five hundred, and a two fifty preventative dental, and then, also, we have an HDHP five hundred, two fifty comprehensive dental, so we have the preventative and comprehensive, whether you're on a, a single two fifty, a single five hundred, or a single two fifty, same thing with dual, same thing with family. So this, this brown column right here is kind of what the employee cost currently is, what the employee is paying for a single plan, a dual plan, or a family plan. And then, so this column right here, which shows Anthem op- option one, this is if, if the employee, is to take on all the increase, based upon what's there right now, this is what, uh, under every plan, what, what the employee would have to pay additional per month. So you can see, you know, I mean, under the, under the dual and the family plan, those are some pretty substantial increases.
Essentially, I have thirty-four employees that are using the two fifty plan.
Yes. Um, so, so that's, that's if the employee picks up, that, that's if the county pays the same dollar amount towards the employees paying, plan that they're paying now, this one is the employee pays the same amount that they're paying now, so obviously, there's no increase to the employee, cause the county's picking up the increase on this one. So that's, that's option two. Option three is the county pays the same percentage, so again, right here, if you look at what we're paying, um, what the county, what, what the employee is paying per the plan, for instance, on this HDHP single, they're paying ninety-seven percent, there's ninety-seven percent here, so all the percentages are exactly the same. So under this scenario, this shows you what the monthly increase is for every employee under each one of those plans. And so, you know, some of these increases, you know, depending on what plan you're on, are not as, you know, if you're on a richer plan, and it may cost a little bit more, um, but if you're on a two fifty, you could potentially move down to, a five hundred plan, and you could save, you could save per month, but like I said, that's, that's, that's entirely in employee choice. But this is if the county pays the same percentage, and this is what the county has, has done, that's what they did last year. They, they, they kind of chose this option. The only thing with this one, it's, it's, it's a little skewed, cause if you remember a couple of years ago, um, we pay significant, we, we pay a pretty high percentage under the family plan for five hundred, because when we transitioned from Sigma to Anthem, we had four plans under, under Anthem, we had a single, we had a, um, employee spouse, employee children, and then a family plan, and so those that were on employee children, when we did the transition, they had to go to a family plan, which was significantly more, so, so some of these just going on the same percentage, they're, they're a little, just on those, we pay a little higher than we would normally on other plans, which is, is, it's a little skewed, so this is county pays the same percentage. Um, again, this is a, this is a revised plan of, it, it, it fluctuates the percentages a little bit, where the, the county is paying more for the, employee only plan by a couple of percent than it would for dual or, or family plans. So the, the, the cost increases per month are in this column, and I can, and, and if it's helpful, I can send this to the board to, to look at, in addition to here, cause I know there's, there's a ton of information there. The next one, this is, this basically works into that, this fits into, in, into what I had in my budget for the eighty-four thousand. So, again, you, you, you see some substantial increases there, depending on what plan, plan you're on. And then the last one, so this is, right now, we currently don't have a one thousand deductible plan. Um, so this is eliminating the two fifty and adding a one thousand dollar deductible plan. So I'll just use a, use an example right here, so if you're currently on a K, K two fifty, for a family plan, you're paying eight eighty-five a month right now. So one, we would offer that K two fifty for a family plan, so you would automatically have to go down, well, you have to go down to a lower tier, so if you go down to the lower tier, you're saving three hundred and eight, you, you're paying three hundred and eighteen dollars a month less than what you're currently paying right now. Some of the difficulty with some of this is you're trying to formulate new tier levels where those employees, for instance, let, let's just look at the same family plan on a, on a five hundred, right now, if you're on a K A five hundred comprehensive, you're paying five oh five a month. Under this plan, you'd have to pay five sixty-seven a month, so again, there would be a sixty-two dollar increase for that plan.
For those already on it.
Yeah, but the, the previous one, you would be paying a hundred and seventeen more, so.
There are, so, a- again, with all these, there is some room, if the board says, you know, we don't wanna pay more than X, there's a way to work. there's a way to work in these plans that are, that we could probably work it so it's beneficial to all employees, um, from a, from a proportional fair standpoint. But again, these are just a couple initial stabs that I'm trying to come up with some plans, knowing that we, we are gonna see it, that we are gonna see a nine percent increase for me.
Yeah. I mean, my, my, my contention on this has always been that, you know, um, A, the two fifty is, is a plan that you rarely see, and, and B, that the county's already, in a, in a sense, paying, um, being very generous in the sense that it's, it's subsidizing, uh, dual and employ- and, and family. Um, I mean, you look at the differential of, of, of an employee being on a two fifty plan, and the county's paying six hundred dollars versus an employee on a family plan with the same two fifty plan is paying eleven hundred and forty dollars. You know, that's a six, seven thousand dollar a year differential and compensation to that, to those employees, even though they're both the same employees. And I, and I just think that that's, doesn't really adjust for it, you know, and, and isn't, and, and isn't really, doesn't really create that sense of, you're actually getting a real benefit when you work for the county, because that is, that, that is a raise that you're getting that you wouldn't get. I mean, I don't pay for any of my employees' family portions. That's entirely on them, you know, and that's, that's a big number. I don't know what Chris does with his, you know, um, so, you know, in the, in the marketplace, and now there's even less small businesses that are doing that, so. I, I really think that, that, well, the two fifty plan is, is, I mean, I'm on the five hundred plan, I go to the thousand plan, just to save money, right? You know, and that saves the county money, you'll see those shifts happening as well too.
Well, well, and again, and, and, and that's kind of part of the bigger discussion too, I mean, I, I think you said that, you know, counties do offer this, because they generally maybe don't have the salaries that are equivalent to the, to the private sector also, and, and so that's one thing to look at too. You know, hopefully, within the next two, three weeks, we're gonna have the whole comp study and to see kind of where, where positions fall. You know, one other thing.
And I, I'm not suggesting we don't do that, I'm just saying, from the standpoint of, if I'm an employee and my deductible was five hundred dollars versus two hundred and fifty dollars, that's really not gonna be a driver for me to leave, right? I mean, I'm not gonna leave just because now I've gotta pay five hundred dollars in deductible. I mean, I don't think so.
Well, I mean, if, if you're talking a, a fair across the board, you know, you would say for every employee, we're gonna offer you X, and you can use X for insurance, or you could use it to put towards a four fifty seven when you're retiring.
So the other thing too is, you know, one, an HSA account, and, and then two, you know, if the county even eliminates that plan, have like a hardship account. But if you have somebody who's in a really dire situation and can't come up with the, the deductible for their premium, you know, that, that there's a, you know, benefit for the, I mean, not the premium, but the deductible for the, the, the medical expense, you know, based on, because I understand it's not just a five hundred dollar deductible, it's also that maximum amount of pockets, right? I get all that, um, you know, and that can change the number, but, you know, there may be a kind of that self-funding component to something along those lines.
All right.
Yeah, well, so.
Well, we either gotta wrap it up or extend. You're about done?
Uh, yeah, that, that's all that I had for insurance, and, and so I guess my question to the board is, does, um, does the board want me to, do they want me to come up to fit a plan within a dollar amount, or, or, or what, or what do you, like I said, I'm looking for some takeaways, so I can hone this in, because like I said, six options is a lot.
I've said this the entire time, I think that's one of the things that we can offer our employees that helps. Yep, doesn't help every one of them, but you're looking at a nine percent increase, and if we say, okay, y'all are biting the whole thing, then our five percent raise doesn't look very good. Um, and we gotta make our employees feel welcome somehow. Feel like we treat them like family, and Chris, you, you're, you guys are more business savvy than I am. But I'm sitting here and, a- at worst case scenario, I'm saying we go to five hundred thousand, and we cover the forty four thousand dollars. I, to me, that's, that's, that's the biggest difference, I'd say. But.
And, and, and Chris. Might not even be the forty four thousand, because you'll see people shift.
Well, and.
Well, that, that's the thing, you know, on this, so in this one, well, one.
Yeah, we've got five minutes.
There's a, there's a definitive shift, because some people are gonna have to get off certain plans, so I, I did account for some of those, but, but you just don't know one hundred percent.
Right.
The only other question I have is, why are we not looking at a health savings account? Just in general, a lot for that as a benefit, an HSA account.
We, we, we do, we have, I mean, so.
But that's only for the people that are, that.
You can only have an HSA if you're on a high.
I thought there was a different type of.
There's a, you can have a flexible savings account. Yeah, but that's.
Yeah. Because you can, you can put money in there that you can then use.
Employees.
Save and gross tax deferred for you.
Employees can, employees can get a, 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 a flexible savings account, and I'll, I'll have to talk to Ms. Snow about that.
Okay. But Chris, did you have something you wanted?
I'll just, I'll make a quick for timing, kind of thirty thousand foot. One, when I saw the insurance rates, um, and I headed, uh, compared to mine at NFS, I didn't want to, I didn't want to show it to the people who work in my office at NFS to help me compare, because, wow. I mean, the, boy, the people are really paying a low amount of money compared to the, uh, kind of the, uh, private market. At the same time, you know, I've often found myself trying to balance that whole thing between typically government pays better in benefits, but the traditional thinking is better in benefits, but not as well as pay. Yet we get presentations about how we need to be competitive in what we pay to get people to come to work here and, and fill those, say, the HVAC positions. And so, gosh, if, if we pay as, on an HVAC position as well as the private sector in Charlottesville, and we have that insurance, you know, that's pretty special.
Uh, uh, and that's a great, that's a great point, and that's something we gotta figure out.
Yeah.
But we gotta make sure we also sell, but our insurance, we, we try to help as much as we can.
Yeah, but, but, and, and last thought on this is, if you, if, if an employee doesn't see the, these numbers, they don't understand the full benefit package that they're receiving. That's, that's the only thing I was, so I like it, I combination.
That's what I just, that's what I was just saying, is.
So, so, so do you want me to work up some plans based upon this, a couple of different options, including the two fifty with, with, with the forty four thousand dollar increase, and then this one as well, with, with getting rid of the two fifty?
I, I, I would love to see something between option six and four combined.
I don't wanna see too many.
Which, which one was four?
Four was where you change.
Too many choices.
It's basically just a small adjustment either way, so.
Well, I'm not for taking any more of the paycheck, because we're, inflation's taken enough of it.
I really understand that, just, you know, that.
And I know I'm talking about going up, but we can take the price of one salary.
I'll, I'll PDF this and I'll send it to the board, so you can just take a look at.
Chew it around, yeah. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
He just goes, motion made by Ms. Booker, seconded by Mr. O'Brien, all favor journey. Pose, chair, bow tie, we made it out at nine fifty.
No.